All right, it's four thirty-two, I'm gonna call this. Meeting of the Bonner County Planning Commission to Order, first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, what's that? Please apply. Other roles starting down there with MAF, John Lynn Scott.
Mr. Frankenbach, Mr. Sorested.
Mr. Davis.
All right, we have a quorum, so we can carry on, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
The announcements?
Uh, not at this time, I'll save them for the end.
Uh, I have a question, workshop on Monday, do we know the ending time that is, it starts at two?
Um, there is no set ending time, as far as I'm aware.
All right, we'll move to the concerned agenda, which is approved in the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any objections, corrections? See modifications, alterations? Hearing none, the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five are approved. Move to the public hearing action item, which is. Well, AM zero zero one two dash two five. Text amendment, Bonner County revised code, file twelve. Bonner County planning commission is recommending an amendment to the Bonner County revised code five twelve to include the following changes. We go through that with staff report, this is a public hearing item, so. We'll hear from the staff.
Thank you, commissioners, Alex Van, interim planning director. The first file we've got here is AM twelve twenty-five, uh, this is the recommended update to. Or this is the proposed update to, uh, chapter six, the subdivision code. Seasoned the standards of which this application was reviewed against. This is published in the newspaper and noticed to public agencies on August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five. Now we got a long list of, uh, changes here, so I'll go through them. Chapter four, so the only change to chapter four is. Uh, twelve dash four one two, which removes the requirements, uh, or exceptions. And note nineteen from table four, uh, dash two, so that was the, um, sanitary restriction lift. Only on urban water services, and we'll get, uh, to that later, that was moved. Later into the. Into chapter six. Um, so there's a complete rewrite of most of the subchapters in chapter six with major revisions to include. Uh, moving land division definitions to chapter eight, removing the minor land division, land division type. Um, renaming land divisions to, um. Uh, short subdivisions and long some divisions, and establishing a final plot subchapter. Uh, so twelve dash six one zero just updates the naming conventions. Um, twelve dash six one one removes the definitions. Uh, from this chapter and adds them to chapter eight with the rest of the definitions in this, in this, uh. Subchapter. Twelve dash six one two and six one three, uh, they update code references, uh, move, uh, unplatted land divisions and adjustments to. Uh, six one three, so this was your, uh. Boundary line adjustments, your family division, um, this moved it into its own separate. Subchapter because right now it's currently under, um, additional requirements and it was a little. It, it deserved its own subchapter. And it expands the, expands the potential receivers of family division properties to additional familiar, uh. Family types and has the Panhandle Health District review required. Six one four and six one five, um. These update the naming conventions and code references. Sixty-three adds a requirement for all new lots created through any land division to contain a sanitary restriction lift. And also modifies the fire protection requirements. Sixty-five removes, uh, the requirements for trails, um, this is the, um, chosen. Uh, parks, subchapter that, uh, requires the. Uh, that would require a dedication of trails but, uh, retains only the requirements for public access and, uh, public parks and facilities. Uh, chapter six point four, um. Twelve dash six four zero, six four one, uh, those all update the naming conventions to long subdivision. Six four two update the naming convention as well, and adds an application requirement for proposed subdivisions that fall within an area of impact. To request annexation to the applicable city. It adds a reference to twelve six point two to ensure compliance with that subchapter. Six four three, um, updates the naming convention, the long subdivision, uh, replaces zoning commission with hearing body throughout the section. Uh, removes the requirement for a preliminary plot to receive B O C C approval. Extends the timeline for how long a preliminary plot approval shall be valid for from two years to three years. Expands the timeline for how long, uh, oh, excuse me, uh, twelve dash six four four. Expands the timeline for how long a charity agreement approval shall be valid for from two years to three years to match the, uh, preliminary plot, um, approval. Uh, twelve dash six four five, uh, updates the naming convention, replaces zoning commission with hearing body, six four six removes the final plot contents. Section in its entirety. And moves the section to twelve, uh, twelve dash six point six and adds a reference to the new final plot content section. Uh, six four seven removes the section in its entirety and added to, uh, twelve dash six point six, the same with twelve dash six four eight. Uh, and twelve dash six four nine is removed in its entirety. Uh, twelve dash six point five updates the name convention to short subdivisions throughout the entire section. Twelve dash six five zero updates the number of properties to conform to proposed definitions. And adds the provision to restrict continuous short subdivisions. As a reference to twelve dash six point two to ensure compliance with that sub, subchapter. Um, so what that does to change the, um. Lots, uh, created through a short subdivision, it's from, uh, one to, one, uh, lot to ten lots. Between one and ten, I should say. Six five one updates the noticing standards and extends the timeline for how long a preliminary plot approval shall be valid for from two years to three years. And updates the extension request pro, uh, process to reference twelve dash two six six point one. Um, and updates the appeal process to reference twelve dash two six one. Uh, so twelve dash two six six point one is, um. Allows for an administrative, um, extension as, um. The short subdivisions and the short plots currently are. Um, administrative decisions, uh, decided on by the, um, planning director. Um, so that would give the planning director the ability to, um. Extend short subdivisions. And, uh, twelve dash two six one is the administrative appeal process. Twelve dash six five two removes the final plot content section in its entirety and moves the section to twelve dash six point six and adds a reference to the final plot contents. Uh, six point six removes the minor land division as a land division application type. And establishes, uh, the final plot subchapter, medical films, uh, above. Twelve dash six seven one updates code references. Six seven three removes the final plot contents section in its entirety and moves it to twelve dash six point six. Um, I should say twelve, uh, twelve dash six point seven is the line division or line adjustment. Um, section of this chapter. And chapter eight establishes a definition, definition for remainder as it pertains to plots. And twelve dash eight one nine modifies the definition of subdivision and adds a definition for, uh, long subdivisions and shorts. So the staff analysis, earlier this year, the planning department evaluated the minor land division provisions in B C R C twelve, uh, title twelve, chapter six. And identified challenges related to infrastructure adequacy, emergency access, fire protection and stormwater management. Although the M L D process was, was originally created to provide an efficient and cost-effective review pathway for smaller scale land divisions, practical experience demonstrated. But the reduced applicable standards sometimes resulted in developments that lack sufficient infrastructure. These conditions created potential issues for emergency responders, increased the risk of fire hazards in rural areas. And in certain cases led to drainage or stormwater management concerns. In response to these findings, the board of county commissioners adopted ordinance seven twenty, which established a moratorium on acceptance and processing. Of M L D and family division applications. Due to a legal issue with that ordinance, the moratorium was confirmed via ordinance seventy-one. On May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, which established a moratorium on the acceptance and processing of minor land division applications. Moratorium set to remain in effect until October first, twenty twenty-five, and it was intended to provide time for a comprehensive review of the subdivision chapter. Uh, the board directed staff to evaluate potential amendments, con, conduct workshops of the planning commission and purport. Prepare a formal proposal for consideration. So the first workshop that the planning commission held was on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five, and we discussed some of the ordinance concerns with, uh, staff. The commission agreed to an agenda item on the next meeting to have staff present several potential code amendments versions. Those amendments were discussed at the May sixth, May twentieth and June third workshops. The May sixth workshop staff presented two draft options to retain the M L D process with modifications designed to. I dress, address identified deficiencies as well as a third option to eliminate the minor land division provisions entirely. And require all land divisions to proceed under either a short or long subdivision process. Given the depth of the proposed changes, the planning commission elected to discuss the, the subsequent workshop. After reviewing the alternatives, the planning commission held a workshop on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five and determined that removing. The M L D provisions was the most effective approach to ensuring adequate infrastructure review and consistent application, uh, development standards. But the June third workshop, the commission also refined the draft and added amendments to chapters four, six and eight of title twelve to improve clarity, align definitions and address related issues within the code. They directed staff to draft the additional requested changes and schedule the amendments for future. Um, so this was noticed on, um, August twenty-first to agencies and those in the newspaper, we didn't receive any comments from. Any agencies and we received no comment replies from the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, I had a department of fishing game in independent highway district. And, uh, we have received public comments of this file. So into the comprehensive plan analysis, um, so this was reviewed under the, um. Previous version of the comprehensive plan, uh, goals, objectives and policies, uh, not the one that was most recently adopted by the board. So for property rights, um. The, um, this is all staff analysis, this is not, there's no policies to, um. To review, so I'll go to the staff analysis of those policies. The proposed amendments to chapter six remove the minor land division process and require all new land divisions to be processed either, under either the short or long division. Long subdivision procedures, excuse me. This increases procedural requirements and infrastructure review for smaller scale divisions, strengthening the county's ability to address public service and safety needs. These changes align with policy two by ensuring all subdivision applications follow formal review processes that incorporate the findings of fact. And document justifications for any conditions or restrictions. Policy three is supported by the increased scrutiny of infrastructure and service impacts, which considers the short and long-term consequences of development. For surrounding properties and future generations. However, the removal of the minor land division process could be perceived as limiting flexibility for landowners seeking to create low intensity. Divisions with minimal improvements representing a trade-off between individual property rights. And broader service and safety concerns, considerations. Policy four addresses rezoning procedures which are not affected by the proposed changes. Next is population, policy two is supported through the infrastructure and service capacity reviews now required for all subdivisions. Ensuring that population increases are evaluated for impacts on housing, schools, transportation systems and other services. The annexation, annexation attempt provision found in the proposed changes to B C R C twelve dash six four two. For subdivisions in areas of impact supports policy three by fostering coordination with municipalities and neighboring jurisdictions. Helping to address growth challenges in shaded areas. No provisions in the proposed amendments conflicting these policies. Schools, facilities and transportation, by eliminating the M L D process, the proposed amendments ensure that all land divisions, including smaller scale developments. Are subject to agency review and input. This supports policy one by ensuring that the most current school district data on capacity and transportation is incorporated into the review of all, uh, all proposals. Policy two is also supported as the comprehensive review process for all subdivisions allow the county to identify. Potential impacts on school facilities and transportation systems and seek appropriate mitigation measures. For developers where necessary, uh, and then no conflicts with the policies are identified. Next is academic, economic development. Um, the proposed amendments provide a more predictable and consistent process for subdivision approval, which can help foster investment in the housing and related infrastructure. That indirectly supports business activity aligning with policies one through three. By retaining requirements for public access, parks and facilities, the amendments also support policy four by maintaining opportunities for recreation-based economic development. However, the removal of a mandatory trail dedication required, requirement may reduce the predictable. Development of recreational infrastructure that could otherwise support tourism. And economic growth representing a partial misalignment with pol, policy four's intent, but no other conflicts with the policies were identified. Land use, uh, while the proposed amendments primarily address residential subdivision processes, the requirement for all divisions to undergo infrastructure and service review indirectly supports. Both policies by ensuring that new development, whether residential, commercial or industrial, occurs in locations with adequate access and services. The procedural consistency helps avoid approving developments in areas that cannot support them without significant mitigation. The changes do not alter zoning designations, expand commercial or industrial districts, or modify the criteria for allowing such uses in other areas. Therefore, there's no direct conflict with either policy. Natural resources, the proposed amendments support policies one and two by requiring sanitary restriction lifts and wastewater feasibility reviews for all subdivisions. Ensuring that adequate wastewater systems are in place before development occurs. This reduces the risk of contamination to surface and groundwater sources and limits sedimentation and waterways. Policy three is supported by the continued allowance for cluster development within the subdivision process, enabling preservation. Of open space and environmentally sensitive areas. Policy four is indirectly supported through the wildlife mitigation requirements which help. Protect forest and rural landscapes that serve as important habitat. No provisions in the amendments appear to conflict with these policies. Hazardous areas, uh, the proposed amendments support policy four. And by continuing to include fire risk reduction measures into subdivision review. The changes do not alter existing provisions related to other hazard types such as floodplains or geologically unstable areas. And there are no, uh, conflicts identified, uh, in this component. Public services, facilities and utilities, the amendments directly support all three policies by requiring. Public services, facilities and utilities, the amendments directly support all three policies by requiring confirmation. Of service availability and sanitary restriction list before subdivision. This ensures that higher density development occurs in areas with adequate services aligning with policies one to two. The annexation attempt requirement for subdivisions in areas of impact supports policies one and two by promoting coordination with municipalities. Policy three is supported by requiring review of all essential utilities, including water, sewer, solid waste and stormwater systems for every subdivision. Uh, there are no conflicts with policies, um, in this. Transportation to proposed amendments support policies one, two by requiring all subdivisions to undergo full review. Which includes coordination with transportation agencies in consideration of roadway capacity and safety. The annexation attempt requirement for subdivisions in areas of impact promotes alignment between county and municipal transportation planning. Policy three is partially supported while the code continues to allow pedestrian and bicycle, uh, bicycle facilities, the removal of a mandatory trail dedication requirement may reduce the consistent. Provision of interconnected alter alternative transportation routes. This change increases flexibility for applicants, but could slow progress toward a fully integrated, uh, trail path. Recreation, the proposed amendments retain requirements for public access parks and facility provisions within subdivisions, supporting. Policies one and three by continuing to provide opportunities for recreational use. And ensuring that designated access points are not obstructed by incompatible land uses. However, the amendments remove specific language requiring the dedication trails, leaving pathway development to voluntary or negotiated agreements. While this increases flexibility for applicants and may reduce co- uh, conflicts with property owners opposed to mandatory dedications. It could reduce the likelihood of achieving a fully interconnected trail network envisioned in policy two. This represents a partial alignment, uh, the code still allows trails to be provided, but without a consistent requirement. The overall connectivity goal could be harder to achieve. No provisions in the amendments appear to reduce or remove protections for existing recreational resources, so there's no identified conflict in policy three. Special areas and sites, the proposed amendments do not alter the current standards or review processes for identifying. And protecting special areas protections for cultural, historical. Ecological and scenic resources remain in place and subdivision review process continues to provide. An opportunity to evaluate development impacts on these areas. No conflicts with policies were identified. Housing, uh, the proposed amendments support policy one by maintaining a subdivision framework that allows for a variety of lot sizes and configurations. Enabling the development of different housing types. Policy three is supported through the continued allowance for cluster development, which can lower infrastructure costs and preserve open space. Uh, the amendments do not directly address affordability measures, so policy two isn't affecting. Uh, and none of the policies were identified to be conflicting with, um, this budget. Community design, the requirement for full subdivision review supports all three policies by ensuring development is evaluated for compatibility with rural character, design flexibility. And protection of natural features, the amendments do not remove flexibility in development standards or alter existing setback and buffer requirements. Uh, so, uh, this is found to not be in conflict with these policies. Agriculture. None of the proposed amendments have a direct effect on agriculture used throughout the county. There therefore no conflicts. With these policies are identified. Um, these policies are supported by the continued standards found throughout the remainder of title twelve. And that concludes my presentation and are there any questions for me this time? Any questions of staff?
I I have an Alex. I believe it was under transportation, I'll be pull that screen back up. Sure, on the staff report. Since the removal of the mandatory trail dedication requirement, we don't have in currently in twelve six point four, we do not have any mandatory language at all.
I was hitting a couple of different sections that you just presented, I couldn't remember that either.
I can put right the code section.
Yeah, I I have it pulled up here.
It's this new subdivision should be integrated with. But that's on a band name. Yeah. Well, wasn't there questions whether or not we even had a trail plan?
We don't care.
You know, it's kind of a language should be rather say. Can you just currently have trail play? Why something that doesn't exist? Well, number two. Under existing six twenty five A two. All public trails shall be provided within a fair way as if number one sentiment. So I, I don't know. I can refer to a trail plan. Says where they're located. We're not, we're not, yeah, so let's. Well, let's deal with the staff. Or questions that we need to, it's our public hearing, so we need to broken up before we get to deliberations. Any questions, any further questions on the, uh?
One tiny thing. If you go back up to the initial discussion, staff report, uh, uh, or in, yeah, staff report. Uh, relative to six, one, two.
Which the caps, the capsulated persons, what the changes are. And I think that sentence where it says expands the potential receivers of family division property to additional. Milliold. It's milliold, milliold, milliold. That's, that's the only thing I saw or heard during that. Precise, uh.
I'll make sure that.
A familiar. Okay, and the code section says a problem. All right, uh, any other questions of staff before we open into public? If not, we held in public hearing, uh, we're going to take comments in favor of the, uh. Quizzle first. Anybody want to make a public comment in favor?
I'm sorry, I'm in favor or?
In favor of the, uh, favor of the amendments. Would you give it?
Oh, right.
Mine was kind of neutral.
It's okay, well, if there's no, if there are no, uh. Comments in favor, then we'll go to neutral.
And you're talking of the whole.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, changes to chapter six, so.
Anybody online?
A lot of lines raising their hands.
So it's, so it was, but not raising their hands.
Okay. Right, uh, Catherine, you?
Sure, I'll start. Um, thank you so much, and I'm sorry that I didn't get, um, comments, written comments submitted in August. Step.
We know who you are.
Yeah, Catherine Colbert with Panhandle Health District. Um, I just wanted to add some context to this to make sure it was clear on the record of what Panhandle Health thinks our involvement can be and, um. How we could collaborate on this with with the county. So some of these I just wasn't entirely sure, there's just, there's a lot in this, so. Um, some of it I may have been misunderstanding, um, but I'll just start kind of going down the line of, um, twelve dash or twelve. Which is removing exceptions from the table and that was referring to the sanitary restrictions. I'm not totally sure if that's maybe now addressed in twelve, six, twenty three C, if that's the intent. Okay, because I just wanted it clear that P H D does, um. Think a sanitary restriction lift is important, even if it's community systems or urban water. Um, many systems in Bonner County are large soil absorption systems or community systems that are already maxed out. So just because something is community system doesn't mean there's unlimited capacity, so I just want to make sure. We are involved in the sanitary restriction lift and I know that. The way six, twelve, six, twenty three C, I'm not sure what doing to make that. Twelve, twenty three C is written about inclusion of the sanitary lift for all land development or land. Divisions, I think it's written. Is that in, I'm not totally sure if that's meaning like even family split land divisions or if it's, um. Short subdivision, long subdivision. And then that or how, what that means, but, um. If it's any land division, that that is what we would hope for, um, and we've talked about that with pass.
Um, question there. So the way that six, twenty three C appears to be worded. It's a new loss. Created creating land division process showered through the secondary restriction lived. Does that mean, um, it seems, it seems to me that that means. That before. The plat is recorded. That that seems to me that. Like could be recorded. The sanitary restriction and a lift comes later.
This comes to one of my other questions with the or comments about this that I was pondering over last night, um. It almost seems like it would be helpful to have a def- definition added. I know you're moving some definitions from chapter six to chapter eight. But some definitions that I think would be valuable in this conversation because I get it, we get it all the time from the public. Surveyors, engineers, we just had this conversation with the city of Sandpoint. And it's. Maybe it would be helpful to have a definition for what is a sanitary restriction actually in your code because it's referred to quite a bit. And then what is a sanitary restriction lift because. A sanitary restrictions is referring to water and sewage disposal. But like when we lift sanitary restrictions through the process that we have through a memorandum of of understanding with the county and our standardized. S O P with the state. We have multiple different ways of lifting sanitary researches. It might be a shared well and an individual septic, it might be municipal services, it might be individual septic. We have many different signature blocks, I think nine or something. So, um. Having a definition of what's a sanitary restriction and what's a sanitary restriction lift, I'm not saying you have to go through and change up, you know, I realize where we're at right now is reviewing what you've got on your plate at this moment in time. But it came, it just got me thinking that without a definition in the code about what this even is, I think people don't know what it is. So a sanitary restriction is just whatever language is on there pertaining. To whether or not the sanitary services have been assessed basically. And then if it's lifted, it's saying that they're suitable for water and sewage, so it's essentially buildable. If it, if they're enforced, then they've never been assessed and so it's questionable, they may or may not be buildable.
I would, I would question that, so does that mean you have that with perk tests? In order to lift it. Before, so you're going to pay for perk test. Or even apply for the division of the main rate of you group.
This is where we, we, yeah, basically, that's the only way to know if you, if our, I, I have, I will give you guys, I don't know if you can even like what the protocol is for. Paper copies of my. Notes and again, I apologize, I, I was out of town and I just didn't have time to review all this in August, but, um. As discussed in the past, like we already have established protocols for reviewing plaits for these sanitary services, which does always include. If it's septic, it's always going to include some type of field work because we have no ability to review it without the field work. So we can't make any determination without doing that, so. Um, we have multiple different, um, I don't know how this is working right now if I'm in the three minute thing or if this is something.
No, we don't, we're not having.
Okay, um, so. From a standpoint of what. Uh, I, I kind of included some, maybe I should read through some of these that I kind of gets to that question. If you guys wanted, if someone wanted something official from us because another, um. Five or. Twelve dash six thirteen five, uh, five A. Is the one that we have talked about this in the past too, the acknowledgement. From P H D. I, I think we'll need some type of more clarification somehow in this or at least procedural wise of what that acknowledged, what acknowledgement means. Um, because we do have several applications and I don't want to get in the weeds on this, we kind of talked about this in the past, but. We have like land for land development, we have preliminary soil analysis. Um, that, and then we have speculative site evaluations, both of those are information only applications, but at least you'd get something tangible from us, which could be an acknowledgement, I would say. Um, that's how like Cooney County does it for family splits and stuff. But if they wanted, um, to actually verify. Water and sewage and lift sanitary restrictions on the plat, then they would have to submit a land development application through us, that's our only way to work through that process. Because another factor in this is that our, the county application. Does not have adequate information for us to review the things we need to review. So that's oftentimes with surveyors and applicants and developers and everyone involved, they get frustrated because they're like, why already submitted an application to the county, but. You guys aren't looking at the same things, you know, your, your application isn't for what ours is for, so. They will always have to do some type of. Application with us if they're wanting some type of official response because we have to understand what their proposal is. And then if it's again pertaining to subsurface discharge of sewage, we have to go out to the site, verify suitability. So we, they, the land development application, whatever, there's a variety of applications for. Serving the purpose of an acknowledgement. Um, but if there's something official where someone actually wants a septic permit or they want a plat with signed sanitary restrictions, we know those applications are permit app or a land development app. But, um. So just in regards to some of this, um. With, uh, twelve, six, eleven was where I was thinking, well, maybe you guys might want to consider. I'm not, this is up for you to you guys sanitary restriction definition, sanitary, what it means for sanitary restrictions to be lifted. And then you, the other thing I was thinking about, we have talked about this in the past is. Maybe definitions for what the different types of water and wastewater systems that matches what the state of Idaho does, you has, because. That's what we, the lingo we use and that's what D E Q uses, and so when you're talking about an urban water system, for example, which is in the code. There's no definition, we don't, that doesn't mean anything to us, and so it's unclear what that means to you, and so. That's just something to consider, um.
I have a, I have a question for you, so. I, I think that's a good suggestion, but let me, let me ask. Let me approach you something, that's, this is title fifty. Thirteen oh one, a guide of code, uh. Paragraph sixteen. Sanitary restriction, I think it's the definition, you're familiar with that, right?
Yeah.
Um. Says the requirement that no building. This is what it is, requirement that no building or shelter which requires a water supply facility. Or a sewage disposal facility for people using the premises where such building. Or shelters located shall be erected. Until, uh, till approval, written approval is first obtained. From the director of Department of Environmental Quality or his delegate. Proving plants, proving plants and specifications either for public water or sewage facilities. Or individual parcel. Water and sewage bed or sewage facilities, is that the definition you want?
Yep, well, that is the definition, I, I have it in, and I took chapter fifth, title fifty, chapter thirteen is what I, that was updated in this last legislative session, so I would refer to that. Is that's where I, what I copied and pasted for what sanitary, but in. If you guys wanted to define sanitary restriction lift. They don't, title fifty, chapter thirteen doesn't have that. So it would be like something the county would do on their own to say what that means.
Well, means, means that they're putting that code section means approval.
Yeah, yeah, it, it seems obvious, but I'm just saying there's not, they do have the definition in thirteen oh one for sanitary restriction, but then they don't. Really take it any further to say. What a lift means, but. But you, it, yeah, it would mean what you.
I think, I think I inherent in what I just read is the requirements for.
Yeah, you've lifted it, yeah, yeah.
When you get the approval plans, so. I think maybe what we need to do.
Which is what our signature is on the plant, so that's how we lift them. Um, yeah.
If it's okay, I just, just. It on that point, just some of the ways that some of the other counties do it or things that we've seen over the years. There's some counties that will list. Sanitary restrictions by specific lots of the subdivision and they're lifted individually. Um, and then back to the question is how they're lifted, uh, other jurisdictions will use a recorded document. That's submitted that basically verifies that they've been left, that just to, just to. You know, formally document this, this is some examples of what others have done. You know, formally document this, this is some examples of what others have done.
So there's, there's other portions of that same title, title fifty. That refer to, uh. A reported. Uh, plat. With a residential restriction still there, and then provides for. Later rebuild. Is that, is that how you see counties normally operating?
Yeah, so that would just be two examples of mechanisms that different counties use to. You know, formally lift sanitary restrictions, and some of our concerns.
Record it with the restriction that later endorse it by.
If that's allowable within that county's code, yeah, so that, that's, that satisfies the Idaho code requirement. But then also requires, you know, or, or formally documents that. Versus having that in place and having buildings constructed.
I think to expand on that, what has been discussed with this group and commissioners in the past is, um, if the intent is to have buildable lots, then. We really should be, we would recommend lifting them at the plating process just to make sure. Property lines get oriented properly and you don't run into a problem, but if sanitary restrictions are enforced. And someone comes into our office for a septic permit down the road. We would just assess the parcel based on whatever its conditions are, and then either issue it or not issue it, depending if it's.
You like the. Getting the lift at the time they're.
Basically, the way we're essentially handling it is a septic permit would be an. An acknowledgement or a permit, that's basically lifting them through issuance of that permit. But where we run into problems is if that permit isn't required before a building location permit is issued, and now they build the structure, and then they ask for us to come. Out. If the site doesn't have a suitable space now or a pickle, or sometimes they need a more complicated site.
Might, that might be down the road from when the class actually record.
Yeah. So I think just from the sake of a county or a municipality. Planning how they wanna grow, if the intent is to create new land divisions where we expect and desire them to be buildable, whether it's a family split. Short subdivision, a long subdivision, whatever it is. At, from our world and our perspective, it's best to include us on the front end and just get the sanitary lift, really, for the most part, unless. There's some situation where we've talked about before with. Maybe recreational lots where they won't, there's not an intent to build or.
Can I ask her a question?
Sure. Catherine, you know, like, we're. You brought up a good topic here, those recreational lots. You suggest language. In here, because the way it reads it wouldn't allow.
That's why I'm just not sure what that language means.
Yeah.
And on that, so. I was hoping to get some specific. Language, uh, Bennewak County has, is, they've got a recreation subdivision ordinance that's very specific to RV users. Trying to get language from Shoshone, and I haven't. They're not quite there yet with theirs, so, um, I could provide that. Separately, but essentially they, they. They'll approve the plat with sanitary restrictions. In force, um, but then also clarify that there's no, you know, water sanitary services, things like that, um. And then there's other examples where maybe, you know, one of the lots that Catherine said may not be intended to be buildable, and that's. Fine, because one of the, one of the challenges with this that we see in all counties that, that, you know, allow subdivisions to be created with sanitary restrictions in force. Is this conversation that we're having right now typically doesn't translate to the buyers of that property. Um, and, and many of our concerns have, have, are addressed through the, the, the building permanent review, so, you know, previously there, and we have, you know. Current, you know, legal challenges because of it, where plats were approved with sanitary restrictions in force. BLPs were issued, certificate of occupants were issued, it, and then, you know, there was no verification of. Approved wastewater disposal in those situations, so obviously that's, you know, the bigger concern. Um, it just really, especially for those property owners that are buying these zones, because. You know, these, the, the, the details of, you know, this aspect of subdivisions aren't necessarily passed on through that. Process, and then sometimes results in either people building homes on. May not be buildable parcels, or purchasing parcels that they've been told are buildable, that haven't been. Assessed and may not be buildable, sometimes they're not buildable, so that's just, just kind of explaining where that concern comes from.
Great, thank you.
Dave Moment, uh, I'd like to echo a lot of what they said, uh, especially about having. This dealt with on the front end to save a lot of heartache, especially for people who buy parcels down the road and don't know what they've bought. Uh, I think it's super important, and there's no reason not to. Except for the recreational lot after we, I even, I have a friend who. Wants to do exactly that with. One of it, he wants to divide his up and leave one of them recreational, so. Uh, it is a thing. Although it's not a common thing, and then my only other thing is I spent very little time in chapter six here, mostly in one and two, and, um. But I would like to see, and I know a lot of people with the family. Uh, split, be. Come back to four. But there's really no demand for ten, it opens up probably all kinds of. Issues that happened with MLDs before, and so that's my only input to chapter six.
Alright, um. Any other? Neutral comments? Dave, we'll go to, uh, any comments that are. In opposition to the proposed changes. Alright, with that, we'll close public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Um, I have a couple of. Lots. I, I agree with, for the comments that was made that the family. Exemption should be limited to four lots. I don't see any reason to need ten there. And I think, I think we need to discuss. With regard to the sanitary restriction. It seems to me that. You need, first of all, we need, we need to include that. That, uh. Sanitary restriction definition. And. Hello, fifty, thirteen oh one sixteen. Should be. In, you know, in the. We've, somewhere in six twenty-three.
So would you like it to? Um, just reference that?
Could just reference it, but, uh.
Do you want us to be specific in that, or do you want it to be, uh, title fifty, chapter thirteen?
What should we refer to chapter thirteen? Section thirteen oh one, okay. Paragraph sixteen. I think we said before, it can be reiterated as it's written because today. Put the caveat as presently, whatever that proper legal caveat is for changes. There's gonna get, still, so we have to go there, to have them do that, it might not happen. So if we say what it is. Then somebody's gonna check later to see if that's the latest word, but. That's a common way to. Say, say, so how do you wanna say? Well, not sure, whatever the, whatever the. Accepted legal language is to say. Here's a citation of the code. For its latest rendition or whatever, I mean, that's a common. Add on caveat that you see. Well, if you just refer to the section, unless they, unless they, unless they number it differently, it's gonna be, it's gonna take up whatever changes are. Yeah, it's just, I wouldn't want somebody to think that that's it, but no. Well, the code is, it can change for five years, it'll be an interim change, a substantial change to the state code somewhere. We could say as presently, uh, yeah. Such a common phrase that goes. Sixteen. I can, either supplement, but. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be found without too much trouble. So, wait, let's just, so that's. Concern about the. Yeah, exemptions. Yeah, the, the, uh, six twenty-three. See, I'm sorry, can I, can we just hit those individually? Sure, I mean, cause I would. Otherwise, I'm gonna forget, kinda off point, you can hear. Regards to the families. Separate their splits. I too would agree that four seems more than adequate for this, I would like to see four.
For me, I disagree, I think ten is fine. I mean, I can speak just from personal experience. Landlords have property, there's, he kids. Yeah, great, there's fifty acres to split. So, I, I don't, it's a family land division, I don't think ten's a reasonable, but. It's already specific on who you go to and how many times. So I don't think. That creates any type of issue. But we even saw the numbers, most family land divisions never traded. And they stayed with who it was, but to. And then sold and further simplified, the data shows that, the statistics show that. So I don't think that's a problem. And you're taking away property rights, you're taking away the ability for families to split their last two of them.
And.
To, that's created undue burden that doesn't need to be there, because there's. There hasn't, there's nothing that shows there's a problem.
Listen, methods would be, but, yeah, under that process of only four, and then there's a time restriction on further.
Yes.
So, like, if, if the family did. Three and a big remainder. And then. The time element for that fourth one. They further divided family wise. That would have to be taken account, so that. Stein these plans are paid.
I think, I kind of agree with Eric, I think the real limitation. Is who have properties to go to.
Right.
And the limitation on the timing. And, and just because we haven't seen very many that are more than four, doesn't mean that occasionally the demand will be there for something more than four.
Yes.
With a larger family.
But.
I mean, any, any, you know, five is probably not all useful, you know. Then maybe, but.
We did hear from a few people commenting about that during workshops.
Yeah.
Six kids.
Right. Right.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Eric as well, you know, there's a lot of people out there, I know some families, I talked to a guy, has seven kids. I know from personal experience, my, my grandparents. They both passed away. They went, I went to the grandkids or the great grandkids, there's twenty pieces. So, we didn't create any family splits that way, but I'm saying is that. Four seems kind of restrictive to me. And I also, because of that. I, I don't know if you want me to address twelve. Six thirteen. Is that what we're talking about right now? Yeah, we're in twelve sixteen, yeah, twelve thirteen, I'll do it anyway. You know, a lot of, a lot of problems with some of that stuff as well, on the family splits, like, this proposed language shares that go ahead and acknowledge. And on health indicated that location. Has been identified and proved that can be wastewater disposal for the parcels. You know, I know for a lot, a lot of these folks, you know. In the instance of grandkids, even though the, the parents want to go ahead. And set the, this, they wanna put this in this trust, they want the beneficiaries to be the kids, grandkids, great grandkids, whatever. A lot of those great grandkids. Are, don't have the ability, they're not eighteen years old. Right now. And so I think that's an. That's an extra burden to go ahead and have any kind of a. A sanitary restriction lift, if you will. On that. Because I believe. I believe the title fifty allows for sanitary restrictions to be placed, matter of fact, that's the leading. Sentence in there in fifty thirteen twenty-six. And. And so if the state statute. Allows this. And the county prohibit it, prohibits it, that creates a conflict. And so. I don't know if we wanna go ahead and incorporate some language regarding fifty dash thirteen twenty-six in there. Go ahead and clean some of this stuff up, or how you wanna go ahead and address that? Well, I think we have to decide what we wanna do first, um, because. There's, there's really two. Seems to me that new loss created. Root land division process. Probably should contain a sanitary restriction. Left. Unless they're not. Created as buildable plots. Seems to be that's the. That's sort of the issue, I don't know about how you address that. Well, and in essence, that's what it's doing, is when you have that sanitary restriction. On the plat. That's creating that those, those parcels are not built by that time. Question then becomes. Whether or not we want some review of the. Of the preliminary plat before. Before. Get down to the point where it's, it's buildable. Kind of, like, kind of health, so it's desirable when those lots are created. To have it reviewed before they're created. So that, it, be sure that. You know, it's, it's, uh. Something that can be. Have a second system for itself, dancing around the age old question, there's county's responsibility to ensure that there's buildable lots for the land division process. It's never been totally addressed, either way, I personally don't agree with this. Yeah, for me, it's. And, and historically, there's been many lots, we've looked at how many lots, in our discovery of how many lots are out there. Thousands of lots are out there, and I haven't been built on, why? Either the, the owner doesn't wanna sell, or looking at it, so are you kidding me? Yeah, we, we can't go there, it's just, it'd be the last ones that would ever develop, because they're the least desirable, full of different aspects. But the other part. Too many times, a person comes in, and however they find out that the property is there, whether the civil or real estate agent, or neighbor, or the cousin, or whatever. They're going for it, they don't. Have, they haven't looked at the plat that was reported that says there's a, there's a restriction. And they walk in with unknown. And then they find out, or like Catherine said, sometimes they'll take it, the building's location, but then they go. And you can't find a suitable place. Location permit without your perk test right now, because. Yeah, we're dealing with a situation, just out of the city, my next to the. House, your building permit. Five years old. Been happening the whole time. Uh, you were not able to. And get an expired application, that's it, permit. Currently, Mr. Chairman, if I. If I may ask one special question. Currently, just, sure, uh, currently, is, is my understanding, and we changed this about a year and a half, maybe two years ago. Where you'll get notified. On a billing location, now, I, I, I followed that up and I watched a. I don't know if you wanna call it a workshop, that was the two of you and the board, it was back in October, when you said, for the most part, that's working quite well. You're always gonna have a one-off.
I mean, it's, it's an improvement over the previous process that there was no verification on. Um, but with that process, you know, we have basically ten days to comment, and, you know, sometimes that comments, we don't have an application, sometimes we have a disapproved site evaluation. And that BOP, unless I'm, in county, and. Client staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but. My understanding is that building permit gets issued, DOP gets issued. Um, regardless, we've added a. And on the backend, for the certificate of occupancy. The final checkoff to make sure that, you know, that's been followed up, but there is that potential. And it's, you know, that's not a great time, especially in situations if we, we don't have an option for septic system on the homes completed, so we're really just trying to. Verify that, you know, before somebody invest hundreds of thousands of dollars on a construction project. That, that's a viable. You know, project, and then real quick, if I could, just to add some context to the family divisions, because this is a similar. Discussion in Cooney County, if it's helpful, just to kinda see how they've assessed it, so in, in the family division example. I believe they do that through a record of survey, um, so there are really no sanitary restrictions involved at all. In that language, essentially the way we do it, and really kind of back to your point, um. We'll use a single site evaluation, evaluate all of those lots, just to assess suitability, and then at least have documentation. Then the fees associated with that site evaluation will go towards one of the septic permits, we try to do everything we can to streamline the process, make it as efficient as possible, cost effective as possible as the applicant. But that's, that language was added, that exact language was added in the Cooney County code, just to verify that these parcels are. Gonna be buildable, but without having that formal subdivision process, so just some. Context on how other counties have addressed this.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a ball question? Sure. You know, I, I mentioned fifty dash thirteen twenty-six. Cause I had some reservations about this, you know, you're discussing this. And I actually sent an email out to her. And. He suggested, and I think Alex was included with this. So I suppose you can address everything else, like this conversation about mandatory. By the socialist. The follow-up. There's some concerns about conflict of interest. Anytime the state statute allows for specifically expresses. Permissive, permits something to happen. Such as a sanitary restriction. Based on a plat. And same thing with the sanitary restriction lift. So if, if that is allowed. Sanitary restriction on a plat is allowed, matter of fact, like I said, that's the third sentence.
Oh, absolutely, and there's several counties around Idaho that allow for that, absolutely not, yeah.
Right. And then. If the county, let's say, in essence prohibits that, because that's in essence what this language do. That could create a conflict. And that's what I asked our county member council to check into, and his suggestion was to. Go ahead and address all the other items, flag this for a follow-up.
Okay, and then. So.
That was, that was a little, giving us an answer, pardon. I, I didn't hear what you said in this. That's right. But that, that, that's what he suggested, to be go ahead and address all the other items. Follow-up lines on that, on those two sections, I'd say. That comment.
Yeah, and I. I'm not an attorney, obviously, but I do know that, you know, Cooney County, and partially because there's subdivisions that we're still dealing with. Currently, even with all the technologies and so forth that we have, that have resulted in many buildable lots, um. Currently, even with all the technologies and so forth that we have, that have resulted in many buildable lots, um. But Nancy Ranch kind of is kind of the poster child for that. So, you know, Co- Cooney County, several other counties around Idaho require that, you know, whether or not that's in conflict. As we've discussed this with the Attorney General's Office, you know, they acknowledge that, but also. That this, the way that the code is written allows for county flexibility, right? Not trying to block everything, but they're specific. Part of it, because the follow up to that is fifty dash um thirteen twenty seven. And we really appreciate this conversation because, you know, we're just trying to, you know, hope. Be part of that, but this the follow up to that is that no person shall offer recording or cause to be recorded a plat. Not containing sanitary restriction unless there is submitted for the record at the same. Time, the certificate of approval from the Director of the Department of Environmental Quality, which is essentially what we're acting as in this, where that that authority's. Contract delegated to us through a memorandum memorandum of understanding. The filing and recording of a nonconpliant flat shall in no way invalidate a title conveyed thereunder. So essentially. Kind of what back to the original conversation about some type of recorded documentation, the document that which honestly was not being done previously. In the county, so that's similar where our concerns come from when there's subdivisions of proof of sanitary restrictions in force, no. Mechanism to lift those. No review of building permits, which we've addressed, you know, so that that's just where a lot of these concerns were highlighted by the Attorney General's Office. We've had these discussions with them.
See for myself, I would, I would prefer. To exclude that language in six thirteen, also six twenty three, you know, statement.
I don't think we can exclude it, I think we have to do something with it. There, so thirteen twenty six. It's not really very. Uh, no, no, it's pretty clear. Uh, it's not, it's not really equivocating, it says. There shall be placed upon base of every plat. Prior to it being recorded by the county clerk and recorder, the sanitary restriction.
And.
Except such sanitary restriction may be omitted from the plat if it appears on the plat. Or may be endorsed and may be endorsed by the county clerk and recorder. For the sanitary restriction satisfied.
Yeah, I mean, that seems pretty unequivocal, you don't have a choice. No, but there's there, there's two options, either have a sanitary restriction or have sanitary restriction lift. One of them have got has got to be on the.
Says you have to have that. If you, if you, if you have us, if you if you've complied. Then you need to need to present it present evidence that otherwise the plat has to be recorded with a restriction. Which can later be moved, be moved.
Sure.
But it has to be recorded with that restriction unless there's there's evidence provided that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's what I'm saying, we should.
I'm not sure why we're even debating this.
Well, I I'm just thinking that we we need to go ahead and instead of go ahead and saying that every land division has to have a sanitary restriction left, which is in six. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's the.
Yeah, any lot raised or any land division shall include a sanitary restriction left.
Why don't we say this, new lots created through any land subdivision process shall include sanitary restriction. Unless. Since such restriction is lifted or satisfied in accordance with.
Fifty dash thirteen twenty six. Absolutely, absolutely. That sounds good.
Nope.
All right, let me do it again. New lots created through any land division process shall include a sanitary restriction. Unless. Such restriction is satisfied or lifted in accordance with. I know code title fifty. Section thirteen twenty three. Twenty six, twenty three twenty six, sorry.
Sounds good, does that alleviate all the problems that we both.
It seems to me we're complying with state law.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's both.
I mean, there's policy arguments, but I I know.
Our main concern, I mean. One of the concerns that has come up in the past is just that clarification of who's the delegated. Person when they need to be lifted, so we are delegated. From the state through D E Q through our M O U, so what we've had is some plats, um, I we've noticed. In the past have been filed where. There's language about sanitary services on the plat, even though we weren't involved or no delegate delegated. Authority, so it'll say different things about. Sanitary restrictions enforced, but then below it, it'll say it's going to be a community system, or it's saying things pertaining to the water and sewage. It's like, if sanitary restrictions are enforced, there shouldn't be any other. Um, assumptions about what the services will be because nobody knows, right? They're in force, so. Just keeping that in mind that the delegated authority would be basically us because of that M O U and not the county or.
So that's the complete citation fifty thirteen twenty six that says that.
Look, the follow up is actually thirteen twenty seven.
If you did thirty fifty thirteen twenty six through fifty thirteen twenty nine, it would encapsulate.
Yeah.
And it would reflect the way it's written, even in our guidance. That way.
And closes and it closes the. Process.
Yeah, and that's that's part of it, just, I mean, to be fully transparent, a lot of our issues just stem from. That uh, the processes that. You know, where where sanitary restrictions were enforced, I mean, it would have met this requirement, but then B O Ps were issued. Uh, without a review or approval, so you know, we we've rectified that, we're still, you know. As mentioned earlier, it's still the potential for B O Ps to be issued. Previous to that, but that's when, you know, the 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 bigger concern happens because. You know, as it says right in that Idaho code. No structures shall be directly built, and then B O Ps are issued without any. Review verification that sanitary services need out of requirements, and that really is what, you know, puts property owners in a really tough spot. Especially after the ones are built.
All right, uh. A further. Further comments, deliberations, whenever ready for a motion.
I think that comes back to Alan, did you finish your list before I interrupted you and asked if we could do them one by one, or did you do your whole list?
That was my list.
That was your list.
And Commissioners, I don't think there was a clear uh consensus on the family division. Lot creation.
Board, and my sense of it was that the. The uh, we left evidence.
Yeah, I'm okay with ten as well. As proposed here or as written in code today.
Uh, did change.
Okay.
Change ten, okay.
You got the uh, you know, the definition of sanitary. I can, I can have that.
All right, um, I I I do have one question. I know we changed it six twenty three C, but what about six twelve? Five eight, six twelve five eight. Cause we just have similar lines, okay, which we just gone ahead and adopted, or two little toes for six twenty three C.
So it's a similar vein. But.
This is more aligned with the preliminary site evaluation going up.
It's about six twelve.
Yeah, twelve or six thirteen.
So this worked out in six thirteen.
Six thirteen.
Yep.
Six thirteen, five eight, yeah, six thirteen. Bottom of the page, bottom of the sheet. To me, that that's reads, there's been that preliminary site evaluation, but. At least.
Yeah, and in, that's kind of where with the Cooney County language, that. You know, you know, we. It's almost verbatim here, it's not a specific process, it's kind of. Yeah, we don't, it's not specified in the county, that's how we work it out with the county.
So if that was there. I'm not seeing how that. Helps with the other section, talks about.
Well, this is, this is. In the context of. The divisions. And parcels created conform to design criteria, da 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 da. And then, under that heading, acknowledgement from Panhandle Health indicating that a location. Has been identified and approved. That can be wasted, so that's. Like, if you have a minimum, the the uh, preliminary site.
It says identified and approved, I don't know, but uh, uh, site evaluation actually proves.
Yeah.
It brings waste water and disposals required identified.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it. I'm still kind of reading that, I understand it has a little bit different language than what we just talked about six twenty three. But it's still requiring some kind of an evaluation. Uh, for a family split, maybe we could add language. Or an exception to this. On the family split, because it has to be, it has to be stamped by, it's from administration. And straight up file. Um, we discussed this, I think, I don't know how long we discussed it, mention this, we can actually go ahead and and put a stamp on there. Uh, that subject to a sanitary restriction unless lifted. On the actual deed.
So you're saying. Has been identified or. That a sanitary restriction has been. Posted or something.
Um, stumbling along the lines of that, you know. There's a sanitary restriction unless looked. Even on a family split, it's not a plat, so it doesn't fall under those.
So the section we're talking about now, it all falls under family division. Yeah, down to one, two, three, four, five. Compiles you all of the following. So five is the parcels created, conform to design criteria of these various sections. Semi colon. A. An acknowledgement of Panhandle Health. But these are, it's it's kind of weird, it's a parcel created. Like they're done. Is it the better tense would be to be created. Yeah, to be, same with them before. It uh. Talks about a done deal. Why we didn't catch it before. I think this is my version, it was stolen. Yeah, it was there, it was the whole language. Um, well, yeah, the black stuff is the the previous slang, but. Very subtle, still.
Or or a five should say parcels to be created, to be created. They have any questions, yeah. Or opposed parcels or whatever. You could certainly add that now.
Acknowledgement of Panhandle Health. No, so should we say A, should should it read? Cause it, it doesn't have a lead in. Parcell created conforms to design standards and then listed in subject, those are design standards. And A is an acknowledgement. This unplugged one. I know, but it's it's the cut the syntax is. It's um. It doesn't have a. It's almost, it's almost like paragraph A should be its own number. Yeah, and six. Yeah.
Well, I, if I may, listeners. Um, I think the the lead in is still from five because. It calls out twelve dash six two three, which is the design criteria, which is where that, um. Sanitary restriction lift would be put in, so since it's a different type of. Um. Yeah, acknowledgement from Panhandle Health, that's where the lead in comes from, rather than. Using that same language, that's where that new language comes from, that, uh. We. Borrowed from Cooney County.
So, so could we? Instead. Um, uh, looking back and forth here, sorry. Could we just add, um. As we referenced, six twenty three A and B.
Mm hmm.
Could we just add C?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, that takes care of it, you can at least.
And then you could delete the subparagraf A.
Oh, but that's what I was saying, they're they're saying two different things. Where the si- six two three C is a full. Um, a full sanitary restriction lift. Um, how they would. Do that, but this, oh, now I guess.
We just modified it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's all referring to. Title, or yeah, title. Fifty, chapter thirteen is all about plat.
Yes, so you, that's probably where we're going to.
And that's what I was gonna say. For any, this is this section is specific to families.
Cause I know if I was reviewing this, if I was looking at this code, I was doing a family division myself. Or if I was the planner assigned to this, I'd say, well, what does this have to do with anything? It's all about planning, doesn't have anything, this is an exemption for planning. Completely different.
You could use the other language instead of referencing the. They called. Uh, say per PhD.
Like, this, well, I think that's what this is saying.
Well, I know. So if this is a workshop, guys. So if we change the language in five that's down in black. To say the potential parcels, the parcels to be created shall conform. And then it says that this needs to be done. Uh, before the leading into the approval process for parcel. Back in the same loop. Uh, just to have essentially the lift. For family. Was split.
This is, but this isn't a lift, this is not a sanitary restriction, this is just say, this just says. And I think, well, we can remove approved, but. It's been identified, that can be.
Even even that, that's, okay, it's not, if if the approval's not there, then it's not an approval, it's not a lift. It's it's that preliminary site evaluation that the district has, that's that's used a lot. And they're good, because it gives you this indication, what's going on in the property. And and you pay money for it, but that can be applied to your. Full. Application later on, it's good for a period of time. Soil. Soil review. Site review, sites condition, soil review, that gives you an indication that that location is good for what you want to do. You're now expressing to the district. We're gonna build a house here, we're gonna build a shop, or whatever. So, but again, it's upfront, now it's. Now it's. It doesn't say it's required, but an acknowledgement from that has been looked at, that's dark opposed to saying it's a requirement.
But but it also doesn't address those recreational potential parcels.
No, no, it's lacking in the other uh modifiers that we just discussed earlier, but so. Do you want to grab that language and drag it over here, and so it's under the family split language as well? That's one way to do it, to an extent, I don't know if it comes across totally clean, but.
I still like the suggestion of going. Pointing to a six twenty three C. Even if we have to clarify some language that here.
Well, if it's six twenty three C is dealing with planted. Yeah, but I mean, the flats. But the language with the intended length and that be brought in here, so it applies to.
Well, then you, but that's, but that. But without the citation to.
Yeah, but that's, that's the point of the section now, is that it refers to. There, what's the requirements that are set forth in the private code. And since you're not recording a plat, it doesn't really fit.
So it's back to the other question. This means of protecting. All the people involved. So that later on, they don't end up stumbling. But they know what they're getting into.
Well, I don't know, how how many of these family. Splits are 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 intended to create immediately or or.
Well, we're buildable lots.
The issue is, somebody's doing.
Do that, or they intend to be recreational lots, they're giving it to your family member for recreational.
Somebody's doing the splitting, they have the responsibility in that. Uh. That they. Intending to do something that's in any way, shape or form usable by their. Progeny, uh.
So Alex, let me ask you this. If if someone came in. I think we live, I got enough language here, that's been identified, not proved, but identified. Someone come in and said, I wanna, I wanna give my. I wanna give this piece of property over here. My dog. But it's not gonna be for building purposes, it's gonna be for recreation, what would you do? I don't care if it's ever built.
Is there a process?
We wouldn't, I guess the question is, is there a process to waive this? Put some kind of restriction on. Something.
Not at this time, not unless it's a voluntary, well, that wouldn't be something that the planning department would be able to require. Since it wouldn't be in code, and it isn't in code today. Um. Any deed restriction. That wouldn't require that, but um, it would have to be a voluntary restriction.
Though it could say that in whatever paragraphs comes out of this endeavor. Now, here's here's an acknowledgement, unless the divider. Wants to state that this is already built on some.
You never go before that.
Until century.
I s- I keep saying.
Lift, but it's not necessarily a lift.
I still think that. Especially with family head division, like.
Especially with family head division, like, it's from your family, it's like you're some random buyers buying a piece of property that may not be billable for someone. It's still up to people to do their due diligence and take care of themselves, it's not up to us to legislate everything to help them. Avoid all their problems in life.
It's also. Is. Passing on the property to subsequent owners. There's a time element there, but there's no restriction at this point that. Billy Joe can't sell it to the kid down the street. That is, a lot of family.
Still, Marri where states, the devices, the final what's going on there.
It is, right.
I mean, at what point do we, do we hit a wall? That's right, that's where I have a hard time, yeah, to me, that's not our, that's not our role.
Said that was a question that's always been floating around.
Well, you can say that about the entire code.
Yeah, I I know you can, I know.
You know, there's obviously been a determination.
Health safety and welfare.
You know, county has some responsibility, so that that's, well, the state says that that we, the county, have responsibility for the protection of health safety. And just like state itself says, how does that come across? How far does it? When does it rub against personal property? I I'm comfortable with just removing and approved, and and just going forward with the language system.
I think, I think we're going to approve.
Yeah, it's a, it's a different connotation. Should. Should four and five have the word in the black added to it, or some phrase different, that potential lots of lots to be.
I did, I did add that.
Oh, I should be, okay.
Alright, so, my my proposal is that this is the one they have approved. Cause that's not what they do. And then. Let's move on.
I would agree, the only remaining question is something Catherine brought up, is there any question about what acknowledgement is gonna mean going forward?
Yeah, acknowledgement from, uh.
Like, it's gotta be up to Panhandle Health.
Yeah, I. The main thing that I think is important ultimately would come to the planning staff and and people realizing it's not just gonna be some quick email, it's gonna be something tangible, it'll be a current report based on an application or something, cause we will have to. Have enough information to properly review it to say anything.
And I, it's gonna be up to Panhandle Health. And I think it's not us to say what acknowledgement Panhandle should move, so. Alright, anything else? I I s- I I would still like to see some kind of of an exception in there. Cause I still, you know, like I said, I ha- I had this discussion with Jake, I don't know how he, that's a year ago on something like this. So then you just develop a stamp when you record these, so there's, there hasn't been any approval or acknowledgement from Panhandle Health, some kind of a stamp that says no wastewater disposal system. Is permitted until. Read this book from Panhandle Health's part. And right that, and it's gonna actually be, gonna be a stamp right in the face of the deed, because that's what happens. Before recording, you take these deeds to the, to staff, and there, they do not allow you to record those until they are have all their approvals, there's other stamps that. That permit the uh. That allows this, this says yes, it's been reviewed, this is signed by planning department. I don't know why we couldn't just create a stamp likewise, that says something along that lines, yes. You know. Prior to any kind of building or dwelling, this can require wastewater management at all, wastewater system, I should say. Uh, you need to go ahead and get approval from Panhandle Health's part. So that's, in my opinion, that creates a great check balance, it's right on the face of the deed, so it needs subsequent followers, that's gonna be on the.
You have some language, Matt, that you wanna propose?
Um. Unless. I got the first word down.
You know, either say, provided that.
Yeah, so. Unless, unless, unless. The. Lot created is restricted by deed. From building. There's restriction on waste. Wastewater. Services or wastewater system until approved by Panhandle Health District.
No, it's a, it's a restriction on building.
But until. Until they get approved subject system. Because you can't just say, hey, this is not, not billable lot, forever.
You said unless, so you can get an acknowledgement. Or there will be a deed restriction. Unless they're, you know. You need an acknowledgement unless there's a deed restriction. Preventing.
Is it, is it voluntary, deed deed restriction? Well, it would have to be voluntary, that is, it, the substance doesn't have to exclude that word.
Well. You know, where else?
Somebody's gonna recreate, the grantor is gonna create the deed, so.
The deed, you know, the grantor is a father's mother or something, and they're gonna have to create a deed.
Yeah.
So. Unless there's a deed, unless there's a deed restriction on the property preventing. Uh. Built.
Preventing building until.
Satisfaction, you don't need that.
I think you do.
You guys' acknowledgement.
What the thing is, the deed preventing building.
Forever. Unless you get an acknowledgement.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, unless it's, unless you get some kind of approval.
So you want unless, unless those.
Unless, 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 unless.
I I'm not wording it correctly, the way I. Think that should be, but obviously, but.
Just be unless, so it's.
I don't think it solves every problem.
But if there's no deed restriction, then that phrase is inoperable.
If there's, if there's no deed restriction, then you need an acknowledgement, right? Certain priority. Maybe Panhandle Health can figure this out.
Is that something we wanna keep in here?
Get given an acknowledge.
What, is that something we wanna keep in here, or is that?
What's that?
That, that.
Unless, unless there's a deed restrictions for everything building?
Seaside building, reception or something.
I know, we like to do these things on the fly. And pretty fun, even though.
Well, what if you said unless there's a deed restriction? Requiring. Uh, and I don't know what the right word is, approval. Uh. Of a wastewater treatment location by Panhandle Health. Prior to building. So you, kind of what we're saying is. Either get their acknowledgement now.
We put it off to later.
Or you could put it off to later, but if you put it off to later, we're gonna, we're gonna note that on the deed that it's been put off to later.
So it's essentially, it's like it is on a plat, the the restriction, it applies unless it's approved, so it's trying to take it out.
Exactly, now it gets to the plat, it's just a retention of the deed, so, but.
That's it, we're blocking it now.
So when you, so that, now if this person comes in for a B L P. You would look at the deed, right? And then, and then so, do you see the deed, you see, okay, gotta get something from that L, L, that says. You wanna build on this, you go there, go on it. You have to, you have to come up with plans and specifications like you would. For sanitary extension lift. And. Obviously, yeah, Alex.
I feel like that would put us in the same spot that we're in now. Um, where we. We encourage people to talk to Panhandle Health before applying for a building location permit. Um, I guess with a deed restriction and. Could hold up a building location permit. Um, I would think so, but.
I would think so, um.
Why doesn't?
That's, that's why we walk, right?
Uh, the code doesn't require. Uh, it gives, it gives. Oh, that's correct, but in a building location permit, um, the code uh allows a ten-day common period from Panhandle District, and then. Um. It allows for a. Uh, for us to issue a permit conditionally, and then the permit doesn't get finalized until they, we get a sign off from Panhandle District.
So regardless of how the body is created, parcels created, so what if, what if we say?
Yeah. What, what does the language say now? It's good, by the way.
This is a side issue.
Um, it would, it would be to. Um. The way I would word it would say, in lieu of this requirement. Um. A deed restriction would be placed on. Um, the created parcel to. Uh, require. The acknowledgement prior to.
Issuance of the building location.
Yeah, they were.
And we will, so we.
Make it, make it A and B.
Yeah, can we make it even? Sure. Since we're gonna define these terms anyway. Uh, what if we said? Or B. Uh, and, um. Requirement that sanitary restrictions be lifted. Prior to the approval of a building location permit.
But it's not a sanitary restriction.
Yeah, there, there isn't one, that's something, that's.
Land division.
That's, that's the problem. Haven't restricted, haven't restricted.
Right, there's just an acknowledgement. It's just the absence of a, so, I think what you said is fine. There was. But. He doesn't necessarily modify A's. So. Um. In lieu of the acknowledgement.
As we said.
Oh, he's right, and. District required, this will be, yeah. The location permit or an application for a building location?
Or linked with that application?
Yeah, okay, definitely application. Alright. Is that okay? Are you agreed? Good, let's move on. Unless. Alright, since the last meeting of this, this planning conditions. They do. Alright. Uh, I think we're ready to entertain a motion here. So everything else is covered? Whether. I don't have anything else. I. I didn't write anything down for the other section, they're all pretty much numbers. Sure. I do not want to clarify and point it out for Alex. On the short, on the short subdivisions. Is that still administrative? So it's the Maryland Division?
Yes.
It, it would be the same process as a short plat, isn't it? It's essentially just changing their naming convention and, um. Um. Bringing in the. Uh. Ordinance that's currently in place through the moratorium, uh, with the creation of one to ten. Lots. Instead of five to ten, as it currently sits. Or as a. Set before, prior to more.
Okay, we're ready for a motion? I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. I'm really sorry. This moratorium runs out October first.
Correct.
The committee board's gonna go ahead and hear this. Sometime after October first.
Correct.
So are we modifying? Codes that. That are currently on a moratorium, or are they coming back, and then we have to modify them again at a later date? Those code changes are gonna actually become effective again October first. Have you guys looked at that to see if there's any complications on any of this, or no rain and anything else?
Um. We will. Well, this won't. Uh, go into effect, uh, well, this will go into effect. After the moratorium is. Done by the timing of. Uh, the hearing with the county commissioners. Um, but this is, this amendment is essentially. Uh. Is amending. The code prior to the, uh. Prior to the moratorium. So, so just taking the sections that are in our code now that have been taken out. And like. So with the final plat procedures where. Right now, twelve dash six point six is minor land divisions, and that's where the final plat procedures are gonna go, so it's. It's essentially. Yeah. Uh.
Well, I, I think Matt, is your question, uh, based upon the fact. That in the, in the ordinance. That proved the moratorium. That those. Code sections like the M L D code sections were strictly.
Yeah.
I think that's not our issue.
Yeah.
I think, you know, whatever the effect of that is. Is the effect of that. It's up to the commission. Not us. Yeah, I think it's a good question.
Question, uh, it was struck.
Yes, what are the terms of what you left, we're doing is we're modifying these code sections, these code sections, the modification, these code sections will only go into effect. When they're approved by the county commissioners. So whatever happens. Those other code sections in the meantime. Is what. Alright. I think we're ready for a motion. Dave, this is probably gonna be your last motion, dude.
Yeah, we have one length, guys.
Okay, it's got it in front of you, yeah. Uh, this is Commissioner Frankenbach, I move to recommend approval of this file, AM zero zero twelve dash twenty-five. To amend chapters four, six, and eight of Title Twelve, monitor counter revised code, it's presented, oh, sorry, as amended in this meeting. Finding that it is not in conflict with the policies of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan is enumerated in the following findings of fact and conclusions of law. Conclusion one, the proposed amendment is in accordance with Idaho Code Title Thirty-one, Chapter Seven. Conclusion two, the proposed amendment is in accord with Idaho Code Title Sixty-seven, Chapter Sixty-five. Conclusion three, the proposed amendment is not in conflict with the policies of the Bonner County Council as a plan. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. And direct planning staff's draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion, have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this action is not a result of taking a private problem.
Alright, is there a second?
I second the motion. Mr. Levitt.
Hi, Commissioner Levitt has a second motion. We'll have a roll call vote. Starting with Mr. Levitt.
I. Hi, Fisher Davis.
Mr. Song said hi.
Mr. Frankenbach, alright.
Mr. Hidden eye.
Mr. Long Sky.
Alright, motion passes. We'll move on to the next. So. We're moving on to chapters one and two.
Yes. Yeah, Alex Fan, uh, interim planning director. Uh, so this is file AM zero zero one three dash two five, a uh text amendment for Title Twelve, chapters one and two. These are the standards that were reviewed, uh. For this code amendment. This is noticed in the newspaper and those provided to public agencies on August twenty-first. Twenty twenty-five. These are the proposed uh code amendments to chapters one and two. Uh, so. Twelve dash one two two is uh the planning commission. That expands and clarifies the planning commission's jurisdiction to include. Holding quasi judicial hearings for applicant initiated comprehensive land map amendments, previously, the commission's authority was limited to legislative actions. Such as recommending amendments to the comprehensive plan zoning map and land use ordinances. Twelve dash one two three is for the zoning commission, the proposed change removes language, allowing the zoning commission to appoint a hearing examiner. Clarifying that appointments to that role are made by the board of county commissioners. The zoning commission retains responsibility for quasi judicial hearings for applicant driven land use requests. Twelve dash uh one three one, complaints of violation. Establishes that all zoning complaints must be submitted on a standard form provided by the planning department, this helps formalize the complaint intake process, ensures consistency in. Documentation and provides clear guidance on how to initiate unfortunate actions. Twelve dash two one four, two one seven, two two four, and two three five. And two four seven, um, these are all noticing procedures. Uh, this revives, uh, revises public notice language across these sections to. Uh, this revives, uh revises public notice language across these sections to reference section. Twelve dash two six eight, ensuring consistent application of notice standards. Uh, and I'll get to that. Change of twelve two six eight shortly. Um, twelve dash two three two variance definitions clarifies the definition and scope of variance. Aligning it with bulk placement and partial standards only. Um, twelve dash two three eight administrative variances revises the threshold for administrative variances from thirty percent to twenty percent. Narrowing the scope of what can be approved without a public hearing. It also updates the procedures to follow section twelve dash two sixty. Twelve dash two four seven special use permits. Uh, this aligns public hearing notices procedures with. Twelve dash two six eight and clarifies that the review of special use permits is conducted by the appropriate decision making bodies. Such as the zoning commissioner or hearing examiner. This provides consistency in how such applications are processed in review. Twelve dash two six one, the administrative appeals. Adds clarity to the process and timeframes for appealing administrative decisions made by the planning director. It formalizes the procedure for scheduling appeal hearings before the board of county commissioners. Twelve dash two six two appeals from final decisions expands the procedural framework for appealing final decisions from the zoning commission or hearing examiner. New language addresses how to handle tie votes or lack of quorum. Specifying that failure to take affirmative action results in denial of the appeal. And affirms the underlying decision. Twelve dash two six three new language addresses uh how to handle tie votes and the lack of forum. Um. And same thing, the it would. A lack of affirmative action results in denial of the appeal and affirms the underlying decision. Twelve dash two six six modification of terms clarifies noticing standards and decision timelines to ensure consistent decision making and notice standards. Twelve dash two six eight, this is where the the big changes come from in. Uh, noticing it centralizes all public noticing application processing standards into one section. It incorporates Idaho Code sixty seven sixty five oh nine and sixty seven sixty five eleven by reference. It requires an additional fifteen days of notice beyond state minimums. And introduces a zone specific mailing radius table to ensure proportional outreach. The section also adds a forty five working day timeline for the county to issue written decisions after final action. So the staff analysis of this uh application, so the planning department evaluated administrative and procedural provisions. Of Bonner County Revised Code Title Twelve, chapters one and two. Identified areas where clarification and consistency were needed to strengthen transparency, ensure compliance with state law, and improve public participation. Existing procedures for public noticing. Uh, appeals reconsiderations and administrative variances were dispersed across multiple sections of code, resulting in occasional inconsistencies in application. Uncertainty for applicants and staff and limited predictability for the public. In coordination with a prosecuting attorney's office, the planning department identified several specific issues requiring correction. These included inconsistent noticing standards across chapters, the absence of clear direction on how to resolve tied votes or lack of quorum. And uncertainty regarding the jurisdiction of the planning commission versus the zoning commission. These issues were presented in a workshop with the board of county commissioners on April second, twenty twenty five. At that workshop. The board made additional edits and directed staff to present the proposed changes to the planning commission. The planning commission held its workshop on August nineteenth, twenty twenty five to review the draft amendment. During this meeting, staff outlined the proposed changes emphasizing the benefits of consolidating notice requirements into section twelve dash two sixty. Lowering the threshold for administrative variances to ensure substantive substantive. Uh, requests receiving public hear receive public hearings. And clarify appeal and reconsideration procedures. Commission crafted a small number of additional edits to improve clarity and consistency. At the conclusion of the workshop, the planning commission directed staff to schedule the amendment for public hearing. The proposed amendment is intended to standardize noticing practices, establish clear procedures for tie vote and quorum scenarios. And delineate the roles of the planning commission zoning commission and the board of county commissioners. This revision, these revisions strengthen procedural fairness, improve transparency, and ensure compliance with the local land use planning. So we didn't receive any comments on this file. Uh, we received no comment replies from the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Idaho Department of Fish and Game, and the Independent Highway District. And we have uh received public comments on this file which are included in your act. Take a drink before I give them those. Yeah. The comprehensive plan analysis for property rights. So the amendment strengthens uh due process by centralizing public notice and application processing in twelve dash two six eight. And in fifteen additional days beyond the state minimum. And establishing mailed notice REI to that scale by zoning district. The clarification of roles in twelve dash one two two and one two three codifies the routing. Of applicant initiated comprehensive plan map amendments. To the planning commission and reverses other quasi judicial hearings to the zoning commission or hearing examiner as appointed by the board. Appeal and reconsideration procedures in twelve dash two six one, two six two, and two six three set clear timelines, specify outcomes for tie votes or lack of quorum. And require written decisions. These items support the Attorney General checklist, expectation for purpose nexus and proportionality. And they facilitate timely findings that document why conditions or exactions are warned. Uh, the amendment does not change rezoning criteria or procedures directly. Therefore. And is therefore neutral to policy four. Although uniform, the uniform noticing appeal framework supports compliant rezoning processes, but. No policy conflicts were identified. For population, the amendment creates consistent intake completeness noticing and decision timelines in twelve dash two sixty. That make it easier to incorporate current population information during hearings. Zone specific mail notice REI recognize lower density in rural and resource zones and help capture a. Wider set of potentially effective residents. Section twelve dash two sixty eight includes area of city impact noticing provisions. And directs conformance with the applicable A C I agreements. Um, that should be A O I agreement, excuse me, uh, what, or which supports uh inter jurisdictional coordination. With cities and neighborhood counties. The amendment does not mandate population study updates or add new demographic analysis requirements and is therefore supported but. Supported by indirect with respect to policies one two. School facilities and transportation. Uh, session twelve dash two sixty. Requires standardized notice that is consistent with Idaho Code and adds additional notice time. The reconsideration process in twelve dash two six three expressly calls for agency and political subdivision notice, which includes school districts. Uh, section twelve dash two six eight G prioritizes review of public school facilities and public emergency facilities. These provisions support early identification of capacity and. Uh, transportation concerns and have helped the county document and when appropriate, condition approvals to mitigate impacts. And no conflicts were identified. Economic economic development. Uh, the amendment improves predictability and transparency process for applicants and neighbors. By consolidating notice, clarifying hearing bodies, and establishing decision timelines. This can reduce uncertainty for small businesses and agricultural enterprises. Without changing the underlying permission structure. And the ability in twelve dash two six eight H for the governing body to consider related permits concurrently. Can shorten total processing time for integrated projects. Lowering administrative variance authority to twenty percent in twelve dash two three eight may move. More proposals to hearing which increases public input, but it can extend timelines for minor dimensional adjustments. The amendment does not. The amendment does not directly revise standards for commercial, industrial, or employee housing. Support is largely procedural and there is no direct conflict with the policies. Land use, the amendment clarifies the respective jurisdiction. Of the planning commission and the zoning commission consolidates public notice language under twelve dash two sixty eight. And standardizes appeal and reconsideration processes. These procedural elements support the consistent. Application of unconditional and conditional use frameworks. And help ensure that required findings regarding services, access, and neighborhood compatibility are made on the record. The amendment does not alter the map of suitable areas or change use allowances and is therefore substantively neutral while procedurally support. For natural resources, the. Amendment does not create or modify environmental performance standards. It supports consistent application of existing standards by centralizing application processing. And notice in twelve dash two six eight and by clarifying decision rules and appeal routes. The reduction of administrative variance authority to twenty percent may shift more clustered or setback related relief into public hearings. Which can improve the public record. On resource considerations, but may add time and cost to certain designs. Overall, the relationship is procedural, it's supportive, and no conflict with policies were identified. Hazardous areas, the amendment does not set new hazard area standards and improves the procedures by which. Such standards are applied through earlier and broader notice, clearing clearer hearing body jurisdiction and defined. Appeal and reconsideration timelines. These changes can enhance agency participation from floodplain, fire, and transportation providers and support. Defensible findings on hazard avoidance and mitigation. Relationships are procedural and supportive with no conflicts identified. Public services, facilities, and utilities. Section twelve dash two sixteen standardizes notice and provides additional lead time, which supports. Uh, provider comment on capacity and service impacts. The amendment is neutral. Regarding density or the creation of public facilities. It aids court coordination by clarifying timelines and decision points. Allowing service providers to participate more effectively. No conflicts were identified. Transportation, the amendment creates a clearer and more predictable record for each application. But defining completeness. Review, noticing hearing bodies and written decision timelines. This record supports transportation planning and level of service evaluations and provides a platform for bike and pedestrian connectivity considerations during review. The amendment does not change transportation adequacy thresholds or required non motorized facilities and is therefore supportive in a procedural way. Recreation, the amendment does not create recreation programs or require access dedications. It supports early identification of recreation related issues. Their standardized notice and clear hearing bodies. There's no conflict with policy three since the amendment does not authorize required access achievements on private property. And relationships are procedural and supportive. Special areas and sites, the amendment is neutral with respect to creating maps or adopting scenic byway design standards. It supports consistent recognition and review of special areas by clarifying notice, hearing, appeal, and reconsideration procedures. No conflicts identified. Housing, the amendment does not change housing allowances or incentives. Predictable processes and clear appeal routes can reduce uncertainty. For a range of housing proposals, including workforce and special needs housing. The reduction of administrative variance allowance may channel more clustered housing requests into public hearings, which can improve the record, but. May extend timelines. Relationships are procedural and supportive with no policy conflicts identified. Community design, the amendment clarifies variance notice and appeal procedures, which improves the fairness and predictability. Of applying design related standards where they already exist. It is not adopt or revise specifics design standards and this relationship is supportive and procedural with no conflicts identified. And it would be the same for agriculture. No conflicts identified. Relation to the relationship is supportive and procedural. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions if you have any for me.
Any questions of staff?
Alex, what says uh under, I probably wrote the very first one, I think it's one. Twelve dash one twenty two. Art D. This is the planning commissioner show also hold quasi judicial hearings for applicant initiated comprehensive by that. All comprehensive plan that says have an applicant.
Sure, yeah, um.
Should that say? Non or applicant because I I've seen that term used other word, other places to catch our county code.
I think what the, uh, let's see, one twenty two. D is what you're saying.
Yes, yeah. What was the question again? Well, if it says planning commissioner shuffle request judicial hearings for applicant initiated comprehensive plan math amendments. And my comment was, I think all plan amendments have has an applicant. Now, other places in in Bonner County Vice Code. References owner initiated. Uh, right, that's a state statute that if an owner initiated. As for a rezone. It cannot be changed for four years. I think that that language could be directly from sixty five of that. And I wonder if we shouldn't use that exact same language so we we're. We're spelling that completely out.
What uh what is your proposal?
You would make an owner initiated. Literally suggested, yeah.
Or non legislative.
I've said. On county initiated.
Oh, no, county achieving.
It was either the applicant or the owner.
Wait a minute, guys, this this guy, okay. This is really for questions that I have to open the public hearing before we get into deliberations and any modifications. So are there any questions of staff?
All right.
Okay, if not, then open the public hearing. Uh, any comment, any any public comments regarding that are that are. And I'm in support, in support of these amendments.
I I'm here to support these amendments. Table, so. Yo, I submitted comments late in writing and I don't want to drag everybody through them. If. If you look at them. Or I can. Hit them up and a lot of them are just housekeeping and some of them are expansion.
Why don't you go through that?
You go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So the first one was uh one twenty two D, just. Bonner County Board of Commissioners instead of the other way around. Board of. County Commissioners. Uh, one twelve one twenty three. D. It seemed like. You have, I put in other uh. Hearings required by this title, I owe for applicant initiated land use requests other than comprehensive plan map amendments to make that agree with the earlier. Statement.
Where where are you?
Uh, one twenty three D.
Can you repeat that real slow? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I didn't want to read the whole thing, but D, yeah. Zoning commission shall be responsible for holding quasi judicial hearings required for this title. And Idaho code for applicant initiated land use requests. Other than comprehensive plan map amendments.
I think that's, I think it's kind of clear from one twenty two. That's the jurisdiction.
It's could be inferred, I just thought.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, one twelve one thirty one. I added in there in. And because this is. I don't know if you all are know or not, but enforcement has been a huge topic. Lately. Um, so. In in either case, I added in at the end of this paragraph, the planning director notified the complaint in writing. Within ten business days as to the, and my printer's not working right here, but the status of the complaint. Would be a nice add on there because people are making complaints and then they have no idea, they just disappear in the black hole. They have no idea. What's going on and there there's been a lot of that. Um. Twelve fourteen C. I put, I just put back in the thirty days because what, I mean, what do you do if? Should there not be some time limit? And as I said in the comment on my uh. Paper, I do remember this getting discussed in a workshop, but I don't remember the whole. The outcome, but it seems like you have to have some kind of time limit. I mean.
Absolutely.
Uh, twelve fourteen C.
Well, two fourteen C?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Two four.
Two fourteen C.
Yeah.
My bad. So I have been thirty working days before I just put thirty days, thirty calendar days ought to be sufficient and the and the B O C C. Or the governing body can always extend that if they want.
I don't think that's got a problem with this planning.
No. I don't think so either. I don't think so either. Uh and then going on to E, uh two fourteen E. I think it's the same thing for the zoning commission. Just to put a time limit back, some time limit. Uh twelve two six one. B. Oh, I just kind of wondered why that was struck out, it seemed like a sensible pause to have in there.
What what number was that?
Uh two sixty-one B.
Being two sixty, okay.
So so I would have left it in there, it it doesn't hurt to put a little emphasis on that. I mean, it should be assumed, but. Two six two. F. I added on. In the event of a type, so to to account for a a Thai voter, lack of a quorum due to other circumstances. Besides extension or a conflict. So somebody gets stuck in the snow and they can't make it, or they're sick or on their vacation, that either party would have the right to request. A new uh and a new hearing date. So that they can have a forum. Uh B, two six three B was just a housekeeping thing, I said uh. May consider the reconsideration motion as an item on an open business meeting agenda, seemed like it read a little bit better there. Two six three C. One, actually C. Public notice uh of hearing instead of on hearing. And then under that, notice the agencies. Uh lowercase a instead of capital. And I, this may be my ignorance here, but I struck out the. I can't read it here, but it was the school, uh school and local airport. Yeah, aren't aren't they political, I mean, do they need to be called out, or would they just? Be part of the political subdivision list. I mean, if you're gonna call them out, why not? Or or maybe they're not technically. Okay, that's why I wasn't sure, it might be my own ignorance.
Matter of interpretation, yes.
Yeah, okay, well, that's.
The manager of the airport, yeah, definitely not, yeah, he's a complete.
Yeah, okay. Uh and then D was the same comment and uh for the Thai vote for something other than a a conflict or extension. And then two six eight, this I think is the last one, E. And this has come from the, we, I've dealt with it personally on a few files and it's come from the commissioners too, but at some point. The applicant, so I put in there, once the planning director has determined the application to be complete. I can't read because the boy printed, but no further changes shall be made to the original application, because there've been this instance. And RV park was a huge one. Where. The applicant go, like even during a hearing or or between. They're allowed to go back and modify their application. And it's, it happened in the RV park especially one, even after after the court sent it back and then they. And and he had the same file number, but the code had changed in between and it just at some point. It's reasonable to say you filed your application and some of this has to do with applications that probably shouldn't have been accepted in by the planning department in the first place. Because they weren't complete, or they had. Factors in them that made them quite unlikely to be. Approved, and that's partly why you have a planning department is to work with applicants to figure out. You know, what's reasonable to apply for and what isn't.
So are you saying that the application can't? So this this section deals with notice. So when it's deemed complete, then the notice goes out. It's modi- if it's modified, the application is modified after it, I would assume. That that'd be renoticed, right, Alex?
Well, that hasn't been.
And I just, I don't think you can. I'm upset, I shouldn't be calm, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I mean. You're the chair. Anyway, it's been an issue. And that's why I put it in. That's all I have, thank you for your.
Yeah, great, thank you. Anybody else in favor or of the? File?
Okay, all of those in nu- neutral?
Uh anybody opposition? No hands up online.
All right, we're gonna see nobody uh wants to make comment in opposition, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and review. Just kind of respond to that, to to this last point, I I think. I I think this is just trying, this section is just trying to determine when notice should go on. So when the application is deemed complete, then the notice goes out. If at some point in time, they modify their application, it's gonna have to be noticed for there, so. Now, I I don't see, you can't, I don't think you could tell somebody. You got one shot on an application, boy, you should never change it, because things come up, you know, so.
Well, the re- renoticing is reasonable.
Yeah, you have to renotice it, go through all procedure, but that's what this deals with, they just deals with when, when notice goes out. All right, any other comments, guys?
I have one, but. I think. Are we deliberating now?
We are.
You know, since we're, since we're looking right there at two sixty-eight. Uh you know, Dave's comment about requiring, you know, something within thirty days, right there. Well, two sixty-eight. B is says planning director shall have thirty days to examine the application to determine completeness, I understand that. The prior what we're discussing, it is thirty days from or on the A uh. Oh gosh, which was the first.
The hearing.
The hearing?
Well, it's one of them.
Yeah. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna be consistent, perhaps we should keep that thirty days in there, you know, that would be addressed to sixty-eight. Change that to match wherever we're gonna decide those other spots as well. I mean, I understand, uh, God, we're going back quite a long ways when we're discussing this, Richard, but um. Stefan expresses, sometimes thirty days doesn't seem long enough, where are you getting thirty days to sixty-eight?
You just need all all days, okay, yeah.
Well, they're two different things, this is that right, examine the application, the other is to, you know. For the planning commission to process or the zoning commission to process.
Right.
A file, basically, yeah. After the, right. I I have heard that's been a problem. Really, how does it run with this?
No, it hasn't since two thousand fourteen.
But but the other one was thirty days for us to send our results at a hearing. To the board.
Correct.
Um and I take it, we always have the right to continue a hearing. If if we have a hearing and for some reason decide we don't have sufficient information or whatever, we can continue the hearing. And the third day is kicks in once we're done.
Yeah, it's thirty days, the written decision has to be within thirty days of it being made.
That seems very reasonable to me, once the hearing is done, to get a written decision put together in thirty days, huh? And that almost is more reasonable than thirty days for you guys to evaluate an application, in some cases anyway, depending on how busy you are. You know, what your staffing situation might be, and any employees' time and so forth.
Yeah, I I would say typically now with these recommendation letters, um we get them out within a business week, usually.
Unless I don't notice it in my email.
And get your thirty days.
I I don't care, you know, that that back in.
Uh it seems like there are reasonable provisions to ensure that applicants. If their applications heard and decided on and addressed in a reasonable amount of time. Uh I think the timeframes need to be reasonable so that we can meet them. Just about all the time, but those thirty days seems basic. I I have a strong feeling, so I don't want to worry either, actually, but that's, to me, that's the logic of putting it in, just to ensure that the public. As some outside bounds on how long it's gonna take for a patient to get heard and processed. Agree?
Okay, I don't have, I don't know, so there we go, we haven't been where. So we're gonna just take out the strikes and save.
I have to go from you. That was under.
Fourteen uh K, it was sixty, oh. Yeah, it's a couple slots. So D is planning commission, E is the zoning. That's thirty. Why would you put all that language back in?
Because he's gotta have a qualifier at this time, maybe extended or modified. That's with, you know, that's what it worked.
Before it went on to say if no, if no decision. Is rendered as mild or.
Yeah, I did, I like that it was continued. Well, if we're gonna keep the language, this is keep the language. So the 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 red, the red part that's stricken there in two fourteen C, Alex, very last paragraph. Is that currently in? It is current, okay.
No.
Do we know why I struck it?
Uh off the top of my head, I don't.
I don't recall. Or is. Is it now covered in two sixty-eight? That's noticing, this is decisions. That's occurring.
Well, okay.
How was that, how was that, how's that being administered? Because the board hasn't taken action on our land use component. Five months.
And that's currently in code, it's been continued.
Uh I'm taking any action.
Yeah, well.
It is our. That's, it says here, observations, the board fails to act within twenty day working days of the first day. It could take action. Such inaction shall be deemed an approval, the planning commission's recommendation.
Oh, it's, yeah, of the planning mission recommendation, so. I think in this case, I would use scheduling a public hearing. Not making a decision.
They do that? Fails to act, what does that mean, what is what is failing to act mean?
Great question.
Someone fails to act within, well, there's action is described in.
We're never running at the issue, so I haven't had to have a legal interpretation.
I got it now. I mean, we submitted our recommendation April third.
Yeah, or April something.
True. April twenty-second. That's present language. And I mean, it doesn't matter if we change it, I mean, that's the current language. I don't know, there's no.
I guess it doesn't, we're not, we're not here to to tie with the.
The present language is no escape clause, it's no unless. So is this something that Bill Wilson had had suggested, or do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head, and Bill's not online to say anything. But we did, we did work on this with Bill. So it may have, it may have come in.
Well, let's leave the language as it is for both C and E. I mean, it just, the way it's, the way it's modified, we do our job, we make a recommendation to the board. Then it says, or it shall not hold a hearing until our recommendation is be, that's right out of sixty-five.
Sixty-five nine.
Nine. So. Well, that's code, that's that's state code, so.
Yeah.
Let's just leave, let's just leave the, let's just, let's take the strikeouts out on D and on E and C and E. I want to ask Bill about about what the last sentence means. That's the crisis, because all the first part just says, we or the zoning commission have to have to give their recommendation within thirty working days of the date of the hearing. Then it could be extended, so that's planning. Planning commission, planning commission. Failure to find a reason to issue a decision within the time period described in section should not, shall be deemed a denial. Or a recommendation of denial.
All right, so I have another issue, and it goes back to one twenty-two. And this is the the last sentence of D, planning commission shall hold. Also hold quasi judicial hearings, the applicant initiated conference, I guess when they say that member, owner initiated, whatever, comprehensive plan amendments. However, so so so.
You know, we, we did, we've sort of made it, we're we're making it a decision here that those hearings. On a, on a applicant for owner initiated conference plan. Amendment is a quasi judicial hearing. But that's not the case. I have here. Probably something that Bill Wilson said. Says I tend to agree with the commission on this, we discussed this. Whether it's legislative or quasi judicial. She said, and he says, the comp plan is a legislative document. Any changes to it should therefore be considered legislative in nature. Even if initiated by a private party and only targeting a single law or person. I suppose we can extend additional due process rights to an applicant under our own code. That are not required by Lupa, but I would not support that. But that's our legal counsel. So I think we should say. Planning commission shall hold hearings, take out quasi judicial. For an applicant, owner, whatever, initiated comprehensive plan amendments.
Take out what I judicial. And and then we're not gonna make a determination whether it's legislative or quasi judicial.
In the next sentence that.
Especially, especially since our legal counsel says it's legislative.
Well, I would agree, I would say in the next sentence, then would you also change that just to read, however, it shall. Not not consider site specific, favorite the word other since we're changing that, or is that?
However, it shall not consider other site specific land use applications that are, yes, I would leave that the same.
Okay.
That's that's zoning stuff.
Okay. So do we, do we want to just add a border before applicant, owner applicant? Applicant is.
Either, yeah, because it's the same, like Bill said, was regardless of who the applicant is.
Okay.
So, doesn't that, okay.
They're all applicant initiated.
I think some of the structure, the however modifies the previous sentence, there's nothing to modify. So it should just say, planning commission shall not consider other site specific land use applications that are deemed quasi judicial.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so the current language as adopted now. It says the planning commission shall not consider amendments which are deemed to be quasi judicial.
Don't.
So would you like to keep what we, what we have adopted now?
So.
Yeah.
The planning commission will show all hearings on applicant initiated comprehensive plan amendment. Right, but the sentence that she goes.
To say, say. So if you're characterizing what they are legislative or quasi judicial, you're characterized, and it's just not characterized. They are what they are, somebody somewhere down the line. Some judge or whatever may decide whether this legislative or quasi judicial, we have our own council saying. They're legislative, so why would we say quasi judicial?
But Alex, are you saying that take out the however shall be not considered?
No, 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 no.
And leave the shrunk.
However, and just keep what's presently there, just the striker. Cause it's a standalone sentence. It's not however, it's just standalone.
The last sense.
He's problematic.
Last sentence that struck out.
Yeah. Is that a question? Can't even come to an agreement.
Yeah.
Create a planning department and their lawyer, so what's quasi judicial, what's legislative? So why are we doing that, just say, we can, planning commission can handle comprehensive plan amendments. Whatever they are.
And forget the rest. Just take out this.
Take out the rest. Now, the planning commission shall hold. Hearings, just take out quasi judicial.
They'll hold hearings for applicant.
And then it makes sense, just take out however. Leave everything else the same.
We want to. All, cause it it just says map amendments.
Alex, can you put up on this range so you can see?
Sure.
It's not a very good change. Yeah, it may be, but. It's not very many words.
Yeah, so right, the last sentence gets back in. Full of defining what's a quasi judicial.
What I read was was that was probably a little something just to make sure.
Yeah, written the same way.
Yeah, yeah, it's still. Alright, anything else?
Um, I said a couple of little things, um. Alex, just you or Dylan or somebody at some point, just do a universal search and replace. Planning director is always capitalized, right?
Yes.
Not currently, but yes, should be, uh, area of impact. Should always be little things like that, right, um, two sixty two D. Go down there. You're missing a three, I see D one, D three, but there's D two missing, and I think it's hard to get cut out accidentally. But that just needs to be, it's right there.
Two sixty two C.
D just goes D one, D three, D, oh, I see.
Is there a two?
I don't know, good question.
There's a sentence there that starts firm, that doesn't have any beginning to it, so there's gotta be something missing there.
Ah, yes.
It says, the current one says upon consideration, the board may affirm reverse or. So that's number two.
I think you just might have to delete that out somewhere.
Catch, I guess.
Don't, don't just look at the real.
And then, uh, you're done with that, uh? Okay. Under two sixty three, under reconsideration, this may just be my ignorance, but. Is the noticing different for reconsiderations, every place else we deferred noticing to two sixty eight, yet here we did not cut that out.
Yeah, right.
So re reconsideration is. It's. Bound by a certain amount of time, so the board has sixty days to make a decision on. Um, on the file, so initially. We get the re reconsideration request, we take it to the board, accounting commissioners in the business meeting. To, uh, in a executive session, business meeting and. Um. Go over with them if they want to reconsider it based on what the applicant provided to them and how they may have. Um. How their decision may have faulted or. Uh, how it could be bolstered, um, something along those lines, and then once the board makes the decision, then we have to start getting the noticing. So.
So there is a slight difference.
Yes, so if we were to do it in the thirty days or the, you know. Loop up last fifteen days, we might run into some issues of going over that sixty days. Uh, so, and I I believe this may come right out of the reconsideration language from.
Okay, thank you. And then go down to D under two sixty three. Very last sense there in red. Should that's very, the right above your cursor says appeal, denial of the appeal to the re denial of the reconsideration. It might have been a cut based from the other section, I didn't know it. Reconsider.
Um. Yeah, it probably should.
And then finally down under two sixty eight, again, my ignorance, forgive me everybody, but. Is there a reason why these old D got crossed out? We added E. But I didn't recall why we got rid of all the noticing to all these public agents. Or the D that was crossed out, we no longer have. Know that the health district required his.
I I think it's, yeah, I think it's in sixty seven, sixty five oh nine and sixty five eleven.
That was all I had.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question while we're right there. Uh, on E, two sixty. Eighty, and I think I, I asked this question, but it's been so long, I can't remember what the answer was. When we say on there that, um, planning director shall provide public hearing notice in accordance with requirements of sixty five oh nine, sixty five eleven. Notice shall include publication posting and mail notice to the property owners or purchasers of record. Within the table below. But if you go to sixty five eleven. This specifically states that it. When notices required to two hundred or more people or purchasers of record. Alternative forms or procedures that would provide adequate notice to be provided by laborers in lieu of posted in melanos. So sixty five eleven eleven states if there weren't two hundred people in lieu of the posting and mailing. You can advertise it. But the way we have that drafted, it says notice shall include publication posting and mail notices. So I don't know, is is that somewhat conflicting with sixty five eleven, how are we gonna address that?
So it also says that the planning director shall provide public hearing notice in accordance with the requirements of right sixty seven, sixty five oh nine, sixty five eleven. So I think if. Um. If it sixty five eleven, it does say the the two hundred people or more, I think it would. I don't know if it would trump that, but it would be a part of that notice. That would be the noticing we can call.
Maybe you should say notice may include.
Agreed, that's what I was gonna say, that would fix everything.
Well, I think the issue you might run into there is that it says the notice may include publication posting and mail.
Right.
Somebody may making sure that and saying that you don't have to do those.
Right.
And I wouldn't want. I wouldn't want that to be.
Why, why don't we then just eliminate the sentence, I was just gonna say that. Yeah, you already, you already referred to sixty five oh nine and sixty five eleven.
I would wanna double check to make sure that it says all that.
There's an artificial table B one. Worksmith and update.
We can leave it as. As specified in the table. Well, isn't the intention that we, you meet the requirements of, it's those two code references and. Mail to the. Owners within those, because it's in the table.
Oh, I think, I don't know.
Yes, and yet state statutes. And well, we can do more than what state statute. Gives the option of two hundred to do that. I think it's, it's permissible.
I don't, I don't know, I get if if, I guess my point is there weren't two hundred people.
That was obviously to cut the burden. The public burden.
Well.
Or the two hundred notices and so forth. Which hardly ever occurs. On incorporated account.
Distances at night, I don't know, I get.
Well, I don't know, in in. In the the less dense areas, when you're talking about. Um. You know, more or less a half mile. You're not gonna get two hundred people.
That's a thing.
Well, and and if you go to the dense areas, then the distances come down to three hundred feet, and I, I don't think you're gonna get them. That may be bolted at three hundred feet, even though.
Well, but you'll see, that's where my, my second question, it says, mail notice distance is required based on subject property zoning. The current, the property's current zoning or the property's proposed zone?
Current. What is, what is the zoning, the zoning is what it is today.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we should probably.
But you would say current, wanna clarify it.
Yeah.
But that's the way I would interpret the sentence.
But you're saying others to those.
This is, this is, let's, you know, this was handed to us, right? We didn't invent this table. No, it was handed to us.
No, right, it was.
So, I don't think we should waste a lot of time discussing about it, it's clear what the board's intention is, they wanna mail notices to people within those distances.
Yeah.
Let's say that. I mean, why, why spend a lot of time discussing, if we know what the board wants, the board wants to mail notices to people within those distances based on. But so, I I don't have a problem if I'm gonna say based on the subjects. Current zoning, subject property current zoning, that does clarify the sentence in case. It's, it's, it's unclear, it's unfolks. Um, I don't know, I would be, so I would go back to say. The notice should be, should be given in accordance with the requirements of Idaho code, so on and so forth. And mailed to. Property owners or purchasers of record. Um. Now, I was confused with this sentence for a while, I think I've figured it out, within the land being considered, I was like, what does that mean, so. I guess if you're talking about a. A fairly large, maybe a group of parcels that has multiple owners, and somebody's proposing a zone change or land use designation change. That would affect a group of owners, those would be the people within the land being considered.
Well, but. Calma, within the distance specified below. The land being considered, it's two thousand feet from the subject crop.
If they're not within the land being considered, what is the land being considered, the land being considered is the subject of the application. Well, the land being considered can be multiple parcels.
True.
Yeah. So those parcels taken together are the land being considered.
Sure, so and it should be like. Fourteen hundred feet from the outer bounds of all.
Right.
Yeah, I I.
And and then in addition to the people who are the owners or purchasers within the land being considered, also the people who live within those distances. Based on the the land use designation, so. Uh, should be mailed to them. Now, you just raised an interesting point. How do you calculate twenty hundred, twenty eight hundred feet? Is it from the outside in? Or is it from the center?
That's not.
How much?
You're right, Commissioner Donkey wrote this, so I think we just leave it as.
Yeah.
So for this noticing question on E, sorry, that's what I was doing over here. Um, I I think it was the typo, it should be sixty five twelve. Cause that's the special use term, and that's what we currently use, and that's what includes. Um, the publication posting and mail to. Yep.
Yeah, that's sixty five eleven deals with some changes.
Yeah, well, yeah, and but the noticing procedures called back to sixty five. So it seems it's redundant, but I think sixty five twelve is the right.
Do you get very many files where you have to mail to to two hundred people?
Um, I think really the only time we get that is like up at Schweitzer. Um, and even then, um. It, it's hit miss, and that's really the only time, in a big like dense area, probably like Stone Ridge or. Uh, Schweitzer or Idaho Club or something like that, but even then, it's fair, it's very.
Okay.
I I think of maybe one or two that I've, since I've been here that we've done.
But again, I I think the intent of the commissioners is even if it's more than two hundred, they wanna mail them out. That's, that's what they told us. So. I think we should. Leave it.
Alright, great. Alright, any other, uh, concerns, questions, modifications? Are we ready for a motion?
I I do wanna clarify one thing, Commissioner Love brought this up to me, uh, for the. And I will be kind of being a dead horse here. Uh, on the, um. Applicant initiative versus that owner initiated and sort of comprehensive plan after that. If we wanna use owner or applicant.
Well, I think we end up saying applicant, applicant, because we, we knows. It's really pleasant. Um. What about, Mr. Chairman, what about Mr. Owen's suggestions for some of the things? Look at those or.
You know, do you think you wanna look at?
Sure, thirty days.
Thirty days, right.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking, but he suggested about. About the, uh, or appeals and things where it's, you know, if it's, you can now with sections, but.
And if there's only. Lacking a quorum.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's not, it, it's lacking a quorum for two specific reasons. A conflict of interest or abstention. I think are the two.
Right, so if.
And I think there's reason to believe that if you had another hearing, those wouldn't change. Well, that's why, that's why we wrote it that way.
Lack of a quorum, like you said, maybe. Um, whether.
That's not covered by those paragraphs. With only abstention or or, uh. This is the only two re- reasons by which your firm has not achieved, where that paragraph applies. Now, I will say, there are some other members of the public. Who have. Maybe not read that carefully enough. And they've assumed, oh, if there's not a quorum, you you just lost the right.
Last.
Key, essential, that's not what the paragraph said, and adding the clarification that you suggested would maybe help. He didn't submit a comment. But he, he has his possession, it doesn't.
He said, do, due to. A a conflict of interest or abstention.
Right.
If if the failure appears that vote. In the event of a voter inability to gain a quorum due to a conflict of interest or abstention. Failure to gain affirmative.
But I get it. I I haven't heard that from Bill, but. He has said it in past instances where the situation is common. Not doing.
But that's not. He he was, he probably wasn't dealing with this.
No.
So if somebody's sick. You know, where they. Just to forget the meeting or whatever, you know. In 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 Mr. Sherman, if they can't gain a quorum. It's so, and the meetings can't take place anyway.
Well, it's gaining gaining a quorum and being able to make an affirmative decision, not being able to hold the meeting. He still hold meeting with with.
Right, so let's, so the the scenario would be you have two board members. One says I have to abstain or, uh, conflict of interest. You still have a quorum. Uh. You do, you do have a quorum for the meeting, and this, we we can't, we discuss this down in Blanchard. Recall, we adopted Robert's order, Robert from the board says this is majority of those who are who are voting. An abstention is is not considered negative, abstention is considered a non vote. It is entirely possible to have two board members, have one go ahead and abstain or a conflict of interest, and you still have, still have a quorum. And you still can have a vote, now, I don't know how that works with having a second. Still require a second for the motion, so.
That's what this is getting at, if it's a one one with an abstention or one one in general, there's no decision being made by the board.
Sure.
So then the. The underlying decision.
Yeah, I.
Or can't agree, it's whatever the underlying decision.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I think that's, that works fine, so instead of a quorum, should say majority. So except a quorum should say majority.
Uh, I think if we strictly follow Robert's law, it's more accurate.
I think I think a quorum should be changed to majority. A time or a. Or is that corrupt? We need to change that both both places. Or we better say quorum or. Draw a quorum, if it's a quorum, they they can't do anything. Yeah, yeah. Get a little here, that does.
Yeah.
Right, well. No. The form, yeah, you have, right, you have to have a decision. Right. Decisions can be made, you can hold any, but no decisions can, right, so. According to Robert's rules. They according to anybody's rules, yeah, common sense. Why are we?
Right, that was a good catch.
All right.
What do we decide? Huh? What do we decide?
The way it is or to keep it the way it is or to add majority?
Majority, but majority.
That right?
Only the minimum time or inability to gain a majority. Either conflict of interest.
You know, but you don't do conflict of interest.
Well. Should, shouldn't the quorum be a majority?
Well, so there's only so many things that can happen.
But in the, you know, just because of this quorum doesn't mean you're gonna get a complete vote.
Sure.
It's just a tie vote, that's all we're dealing with, is, what do we do? Um, in the event of a tie vote.
But I think what this is, but what I think this is still saying, cause this is only for the board, right, so. The board has three members, if two of them can't participate, you can't hold the hearing no matter what.
Yeah.
If they have to abstain or if they have conflict of interest, then there will never be a date unless a new board comes through that doesn't have conflict interest or an extension, it probably. Wouldn't wait that long.
So what if we took out the clause about forum, this is in the event of a tie vote. Due to a conflict of interest or abstention.
Yeah, that's a good reason.
The failure to attain a firm enough action by the board is considered a final decision, because the conflict of interest isn't gonna go away if you had another hearing, same result would happen.
So then currently, right now, if if that scenario plays out. And you have a one yay, one nay. What happens? It it is is the determination of the underlying decision of L?
I don't know what happens now. It's probably, I think. You know what happens?
Uh, there's nothing caught up. However, it came in is however. Yeah, that's my way.
So there wasn't a vote to change it. So it means, so it means some change.
Yeah. Yes, this would.
Yeah.
I guess you just change it that way in both places.
We're done with that? Topic then?
Also.
I think so. One final quick question, and and forgive me if I go back to Dave to ask him a question here, but you brought up something about the complaints, the violations and stuff like that. Um. Was that in this? Amendment, so we're, we're talking about under twelve, one thirty one, claims of violation, you'd have mentioned to talk about that, is there a way we can? I don't know, get some feedback to people about their complaints that they may have submitted.
Right, so they won't just. And we have. Right now, people may file a complaint and make.
As I understand that the reason why that's. I understand it has become open investigations and therefore you can't give out that information, but what I wanted to ask Alex, is it possible, maybe you guys already do this, I don't know. Is it possible to list somewhere on the planning website? Just a list of open. Violations, so that people can at least see that they haven't disappeared, that they are still on an. Open violations list, there's no status, there's no information being given out other than. Yep, there's my violation, I submitted it six months ago, it's still there, it hasn't gone anywhere, I. I I don't know why it hasn't gone anywhere, but at least it's still there, is that a possibility?
I would have to ask Bill Wilson or our attorney's office in general, I I don't have the answer to that.
It's probably not pertinent to what we need to get done tonight, so forgive me.
Yeah, that that would be something I would. I would need to get.
You know, I I think. I would have a problem with that. So what if my neighbor got upset with me and? Said I was violating X, Y, and Z. And I wasn't. But he's just saying.
Well, anything.
And now that becomes, you know, public. Because my neighbors mad.
Yeah, that's. That's a good point, yeah.
That would be something that Bill would probably. Or. If we were to go ahead and put that on the street, I would like to see who the complaint was.
It doesn't work, but that's probably goes against that whole system.
Yeah, yeah, never mind.
Yeah, but if you're, if you do wanna answer, feel free to ask, ask.
Yeah. Sure, thank you.
You don't like it.
Anything else? Are we ready for a motion? I'm ready for a motion.
I'm ready. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of this file AM zero zero one three two five, amend. Chapters one and two of Title Twelve, Departmentary Vice Code as presented or as amended. How do you say as amended during this hearing, and that it is in conflict, not in conflict, policies, water tank, company, and plan as enumerated. In the following findings of facts and conclusions of law. Conclusion one, the proposed amendment is in accord with Idaho Code, Title Thirty One, Chapter Seven. Conclusion two, the proposed amendment is in accord with Idaho Code, Title Sixty Seven, Chapter Sixty Five. And three, the proposed amendment is not in conflict with policies of the Department of County. Our plans, the decision is based on the evidence submitted up to the Department of Staff, prepared and tested when received at the screen. I further move to adopt the findings of fact. Conclusions of law seconded within the staff report. And as amended during this hearing. And direct planning staff to draft it, finding some conclusions, slap this motion, have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this action is not resulted in taking your file. Second.
All right, so I just wanna make sure, so you you said as, and then did not as present, right?
I I said as amended, I believe.
Yes.
All right, uh, it's been moved and seconded, um. And we'll have a little call vote starting now with. Commissioner Love, I. Commissioner Davis, I. Commissioner Sonstadt, I.
Commissioner Frank about guy.
Commissioner Hiddman, I. Commissioner Lynn Scott, I. Don't you pass us? All right, anything else evening?
Um.
You had your, your announcements still.
Yeah, um, well, I just wanted to thank uh Dave, Alan, and Matt for your great service on the. Planning Commission, you guys have missed, uh, thanks for. Uh, spending so much time on doing all this with the county. Uh, your hard work is very appreciated by our department and everybody else, um. For everybody new that's joining or anybody that's staying on, um, I think our next meeting is October seventh.
Yes.
Um. So. It'll be kind of a getting new commissioners up to speed, being kind of doing some training. Uh, stuff, so we'll be doing some export take communication stuff with um our new civil attorney, his name's Nate. Uh, he'll be uh taken over for Bill here shortly, um. And so, um, I think Bill's training him up on. All the stuff that we're doing and, um. Hopefully getting getting him up to speed pretty quick, um. So we'll be doing, yeah, training on export take communication and things like that, and how to research, how to use our drive. Um, that sort of thing, so. Um, it'll be. Uh, if if we've got time, I'll throw on the. Um. Glossary of terms for the um Mayanese component. Um. But uh, if we don't get to it, we don't get to it, but I'll add it on, just just in case. Um. And I know, um, Commissioner Hidden has asked for a more of a, um. Uh, training for new commissioners for how to find things and how to get them up to speed, so I'll start, um, I'll start putting some stuff together. On that, I think Jake might have put some things together before he left, but I'm not entirely sure.
I've got the outline here, so let let me work with you at a minimum. Or it'll be sending the outline, certainly if you don't have it already, and then allow me to help with that.
Sure.
And then, just to be clear, are we gonna actually add that to the agenda and make it part of the meeting? As opposed to me doing it either before or after the meeting?
Uh. Um, we will make it a, we can make it. An an agenda item, or we can do it separately if. I I don't have preference of the preferences.
The other thing, as typical with our first October meeting, is to. Annihilate the election question.
Yeah.
So. Yes, I. I I do have one question for Alex.
Hmm.
Cause I've had that damn email for so long in this only Gmail account I have, so I I haven't used it for strictly this stuff, you know, if I had a code sent to me, had to be a Gmail account. Must still be able to access my my email, my Gmail account?
Um. That's a good question. This is my first go around, I I haven't, uh, people might come back on. Uh, commission, so I will have to check in with technology to see what I were allowed to do.
Past. We've had, we haven't had. County, the commissioner had not had county email address for very long, just the this session and one before. But when a person drops off their email, that email goes blank.
Yes, that's what I would say.
The Gmail, that Gmail.
What Gmail?
Well. You're talking about the one that says your name, dot your name, okay. Once you're not on the commission. You know, you established one. You know, which which. Here the Milton or or. Anyway, somebody suggested that we have a separate Gmail account. To have non. Discussion items that will be looked at. And I think most of us did at the time, but that's that's our own. Yeah.
One, one last question, could you clarify what the current schedule is for, uh? In workshops relative to the way we still.
Yeah, so uh, this coming Monday, we have. Meeting. Uh, at two o'clock.
Right.
Um, again, I don't think that has a scheduled ending time.
And there's nothing scheduled after that on the.
I don't believe so, um, I know there's also one scheduled for Thursday at. One one thirty.
The twenty fifth, seven one thirty?
Yeah, yes. Um, and then. We should have another one on the second.
Second of October.
Um.
Also with the.
That, yeah, and. I think the board wanted five workshops, and I think that would be number, well. Number five scheduled, and probably I think number six or seven altogether, um. So. I think we've only got a little bit left on the text, and then they're just gonna be moving on to the map.
Well, yeah, so on a, on a sharp October second. My understanding from what I heard of the last workshop was. That we could participate as a member of the public, but not as a planning commissioner.
That was what. That was what they.
Tell you the base meetings. We're not really. Like it too bad.
Sure.
Um. Okay, so who, may I ask, who who's gonna be at the Monday workshop? Who can be?
We're gonna try to be there. Dave's gonna try to.
I will also do Zoom or. I'm not going to be, so I just wanted to know how many.
Yeah.
How many, how many are?
I'll be there, I'll be zooming in, I'll be there personally, but I'll zoom in, so I'm behind the scenes, either Zoom or YouTube, I'm sorry, YouTube is.
Alright. And then the Thursday one as well. In October, it's up to U three by October. It might be, might be a little strange. So. But as Alan pointed out. Existing language. You might wanna run that by Bill. So it already adopted. Serious.
I can agree.
Yes, I did.
So I wanna, I would like to say before we leave here tonight. Uh, that. I I would miss your your diligence and digging and 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 expressing yourself and comparing things and writing even long memos, which are are very good to read. It's a great benefit that we've had because of your presence. Dave, your expertise and your ability to get things clear. And precise, uh, that's gonna be missed greatly, um. It's been great working with you, uh. All the way from the committee, both of you from the committees that we formed back. Seven years ago. To us, to the commission work, and Alan, to your leadership and your. Your uh decided way of of taking care of things and and moving them forward and keeping us on track. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Here you go. Well, it's been, uh, I mean, for me, I mean, it's been an interesting three years, for sure. Uh, and I've enjoyed a lot of it, and I certainly enjoyed. You know, the uh. Camaraderie of this commission, I think we've got a great group. And we were unfortunate. Thank you, get such a, such a good group together to. Basically rewrite the comprehensive plan, which we did, uh. In the back, so. Think we accomplished what we're supposed to, and. We didn't get some zoning, but. Everybody was on our block, so.
Right, I I would like to express the thank you for the three of you, and also my wife asking to. On her behalf.
That's a good, that's.
No, personally, yeah, I I appreciate that, it's. A huge commitment, it's a lot of time, it's pretty much thankless. And we get it. And she said to make sure. To express that to the three of you. Really, to the whole commission, with the three of you, because you're on a curve.
All right, so, um, it'll be adjourned until October seventh at twelve thirty in this, uh, in this room. Fifteen hundred highway two.
All right.